Good evening, everyone. I'll call our planning board meeting of August 15th to order. And I'll begin with a roll call of members. And I was just telling Joseph a moment ago, I was at another planning board meeting last night and the members introduced themselves rather than having a traditional roll call. I thought that was something to consider as a practice.
Yeah.
Anyway, for tonight, I'll just do the traditional roll call that we've been doing. John, myself, present. Sue is absent and excused this evening. Phil.
Present.
Neil.
Present.
Mike.
Yep.
Mark. See you there.
No audio, maybe? You're muted, Mark.
Well, if you, when you get the audio figured out, let us know. Matt.
Present.
And alternates, Zach. Michael Bouchard is excused this evening. Brad.
Yeah.
And Molly.
Here.
So with one absence and two alternates, we usually go by seniority here, so...
Aren't we technically missing two, since Mark is not in person?
Mark is a voting member as long as we have an in-person quorum, I believe.
Okay, all right, awesome. Thank you.
He doesn't count towards the quorum, but we have a quorum, he is a voting member.
Okay, good.
As long as your audio works. Your audio work, Mark?
Mark, can you hear us?
Thumbs up if you can hear us.
Oh. Hmm. He's looking.
The Caribbean doesn't have that good of service.
You...
I don't like the white trees for the Caribbean.
Were you able to message him to see if he can hear us?
See if I can... It's a cook's pine, actually. I'm obviously kidding.
While we get this figured out and we figure out how many people we're seating...
That's where we're going with tonight. This should be on now.
Mark, can you hear us?
I can hear you now, yes.
Okay, good, awesome. So in that case, since we have Mark as a present full member, I will seat Brad as a voting member this evening. And Molly, of course, you're more than welcome to join us in deliberations and discussion. All right, first up is our review of minutes. So it's minutes from our August 1st meeting. Thank you for the detailed minutes, Joseph.
Hearing no discussion, I will move that we approve the minutes as written.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Opposed, abstentions? All right, the minutes are approved from August 1st. All right, so we have a pretty lengthy agenda this evening of hearings, so before we get there, I'd like to ask if there are any members of the public who would like to offer any public comments before we start with the rest of our agenda. You may come up and to the mic and introduce yourself and make a comment.
Hi, John. Thanks. Good evening, everybody. My name is Mary Ann Barnsley. Along with my wife and daughter, we are part, have been part of this wonderful community for over 13 years. And although I sit on the select board, I come here tonight as a local business owner as well as a very concerned citizen. When we came up to Plymouth 13 years ago, we had no intention of moving here. We came up to a town that we had never heard of, never been to, but as weird as it may sound, we entered the Smaha Rotary and something hit us all. We knew we belonged here. And of course, a perfect spot for an ice cream shop. So i- in deciding whether to move everything up here, we had to ask ourselves a bunch of questions. Of course, as a gay family, that takes on a whole new level of difficulty. We had to ask our questions, was it a safe town? Was it a welcoming town? Would our daughter be bullied? Luckily, we spoke to many principals, teachers, a whole host of residents, and we were more than welcomed. And with that, we jumped right in and have never regretted it. I tell you this little backstory so you may understand a bit why last meeting hit me so hard. Like many in this town, we are concerned about affordable housing, good jobs, development, and of course, taxes. So I couldn't believe my ears when the board started talking last week about abandoning next steps to moving affordable housing forward. The reason that was given was the concern that we would be allowing elements into our community. This term was globally used to define people that, in your opinion, were not welcomed in our town. One board member, Molly, finally asked about the elephant in the room. What is an element? As you all witnessed, this question was not only rebuffed, but in outright support of backdoor politics. To summarize what was said, I don't want to debate it here, but while we can discuss it after the meeting, and you will understand what I mean. For fun, I looked up the meaning of backdoor politics. It is the informal and often secretive negotiations and dealmaking outside the formal political process. Not only is this unethical, it's illegal. Is this who we really are? Are these our officials? Who would you welcome into this town? What qualifications would they have to meet? I sat there stunned. I thought to myself, am I an element? Is my family an element? Are we unwanted? I often talk about doing things for the love of the town, and I know that's why you are all here. So I need to know, who is this board targeting? Who would you deem as ideal? Are we a privileged town, a gated community? Or are we welcome to all who want to live a good life? Are we unfairly discriminating against certain classes? And if so, is that the kind of town we live in? Once again, I ask, what is the meaning of elements? Please do not hide behind euphemisms. You make decisions that affect our community, so it's our right to know what the definition of this simple yet profound word is. And I demand it to be explained in the light of day. I'm not a housing expert, and I don't think many here are outside of Joseph. So we hired an experienced consultant to help us move forward last year with defining what affordable housing is for this community and how to move forward. I was hopeful, as most are, because we know we need this. Most of us struggle to balance our personal budget, so we all feel the financial sting when taxes are increased. Housing brings developers, which brings jobs, which contribute to our taxes. Some of you talked about economic development as well last week, and I couldn't agree more, and it's a very complicated endeavor. But affordable housing is at the crux. If you decide not to move forwarding with creating affordable housing, this will have negative implications for years to come. As the report points out, there is a decline in enrollment at PSU. Although they are nonprofit, they do employ many of our community members as professors, T Ls, administrators. But also, any change in the numbering of students would hurt us all. It'll hit so many small businesses like myself. And not only are they customers, they're our employees. So without them, who will be our customers? Who will work with us? We heard the planning board's thoughts at last meeting, which appears to stop or to delay for quite some time the continuing efforts to create much-needed affordable housing. There was a housing committee that was formed last year to work with the consultants who were leading the efforts. I would like to know what that committee thinks. What does the town think? There's also a conversation regarding the master plan and to shift from affordable housing to some other issues. Somehow now the board has determined, you know what? Affordable housing is no longer an issue here. And you know what? It should just take a backseat to other undefined issues at this point. Why the change? How did that come about? And has anybody evaluated what would happen if we don't move forward? What the implications are? Of course, none of us want to negatively impact our much-beloved community, but it's your job to ensure that we continue to move forward thoughtfully and not become a small-town statistic. Once again, you need to define what the word "element" means, to see if it's valid or an unfounded fear. And it has, if it has some validity to it, we need to figure out how to mitigate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Would anyone care to define an element?
I would. So first off, Mary Ann, your family, to me, is very welcome, just like the rest of the town. Love your business. I'm glad my daughter gets to work for you. Has nothing to do with that. I did not, the person that ran into my daughter was struggling, and I didn't want, feel that throwing kerosene on a fire to her and her family was necessary. But when I define "element," I defined it as illegal activities, plain and simple. That's all I'd prefer to define that term. Oh, and one other, one other item. I am very much for affordable housing. That is not the issue. And I've voted many times on this committee to push forward affordable housing so that our young people can find housing in this area that is affordable for entry-level jobs and folks that are just starting out, as well as people that are thinking of retiring and can stay in the community that they love. So I am probably one of the biggest supporters of affordable housing in Plymouth. Thank you for, for your concerns and voicing, and anybody in Plymouth should feel welcome to come forward and speak their mind, and I appreciate it.
Thanks, Mike. I appreciate that. So I just want to make sure I'm hearing it correctly. So we will be moving forward in earnest with applying for the next level of grants, what's available, and keeping this on the front radar.
Yeah, as far as affordable housing, that is something we are, I don't think there's anybody on the board that is not for affordable housing.
Great. I'm glad to hear that, Mike. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. I just want to concur with everything you have said this evening, Mary Ann. And I also, I think it's worth clarifying. Mike, you have consistently used exclusionary language, and the term "element," the way it's used in our language, is pretty consistently an exclusionary term in terms of demographics. And in terms of your support for affordable housing, it's a very specific model of affordable housing that in today's economy isn't really affordable. It's almost impossible to build. And those types that are possible to build, you have not been a champion of. And I just think it's important to clarify that. So this was not a one-time thing. You have consistently used exclusionary language and have violated the letter, or at least spirit, of many of our guidelines and laws having to do with open meetings and having conversations outside of meetings and such. Just wanted to clarify that. Thank you, Mary Ann. I would want to reiterate what Mike said, that yes, you are absolutely welcome in this town, and I hope that everyone feels welcome in this town.
I'd just like to state that this board has, in the past, supported subsidized elderly housing, subsidized low-income housing, subsidized workforce housing, and the town has consistently supported nonprofits that are helping people who need help in our community.
Thank you.
I would just like to add to that, that affordable housing, by definition, well, goes beyond subsidized housing. It's, you know, it's meant to be affordable to a large portion of the population, and it seems like the subsidized housing seems to be a very small subset of our population. But when we talk about affordable housing, I think we should be thinking about the people in the middle of the bell curve of income, not just people on one end of it.
Which is how we define workforce housing in the state, which is the middle, the median, and down.
Yes.
Hey, John?
Yes, Mark?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, and I heard Mary Ann there. Unfortunately, I can't, can't see her to address her directly, but in her elegant speech, she talked about, you know, looking towards economic development, and I think, I, that was certainly something I mentioned at the last board meeting. And the reason that I think that's so important is because unfortunately, in my opinion, I could be wrong, the states, maybe even the federal guidelines for what would be considered affordable housing, what, you know, with a median income in Grafton County of $80,000 and only being able to show income at a certain percentage of that, it's my feeling, and I could be wrong, that with the explosion in housing costs in Grafton County, even since I've been in town, I'm not sure that building homes at that cost is possible right now. And I think that's the challenge, and what I was pointing towards is the idea of finding ways to be, bring higher-paying jobs to the area so that people could afford housing. And if that was misconstrued, I apologize, but I think that's what I was, I know that's what I was trying to point out, is that housing is super expensive in our area, and I think for people to find housing, we have to also find ways to supply jobs so that people can afford housing. And I think that, that's what I was trying to get across last week. So I appreciate your feedback.
Thank you, Mark. So we do have a very full agenda this evening, and this is an important discussion, and it will not stop this evening. But at the same time, we have five public hearings in front of us, and I think for now, we'll pause this discussion and return to it. And thank you. Does anyone, any other members of the public have any comments before we close the floor and move on? Okay. Thank you. And there will be another opportunity to end our meeting for a public comment. Communications received, Joseph.
Yeah, a couple of communications received, one of which is in your packet. It was a letter received from an individual, Jason Ninos, who has requested appointment to the planning board as an alternate. That's the letter that's on the table, and it was received late last week. Per the new select board policy, they've asked the planning board to meet with or review these requests before they go to the select board. So that's why this is, this is before the board as a communication, and then, but ultimately, that appointment would be up to the select board. So that, that letter is there. And then there was also, I did this morning, hear more from the applicant property owner with the Yeton Road Development, Martha Swatz, and she did provide a bit of an update that I can share as well, once the board gets to that, if you'd like me to, to hold off and, and share it at that time.
Be a good idea, probably. So with regard to Jason Ninos, probably a little bit of background might be helpful here. I mean, he is a quite involved citizen in Plymouth, and I would also add that it would be, in my opinion, a good opportunity to have someone from the Energy Commission, which I believe he still serves on, yes?
He did state that when he, when he dropped off.
That to have someone from the Energy Commission also serving on the planning board and have some of that kind of cross feedback. Yes?
I would support Jason serving on the planning board, but to complicate matters, I just submitted an application to the, or an inter, a letter of interest to the select board to serve on the Energy Committee. So I don't believe he and I could both serve on both boards concurrently. So Jason and I may need to work that out ourselves.
Sure. Yeah, I will, I can, I can look into that as well. I know land use boards, you can't have two planning board members on...
Maybe, maybe they're different enough in intent that we, we can both continue to serve on both boards. I believe that the Energy Committee is an advisory board, it's not a, it's not a decision-making board, so we may be able to both continue.
What about the Conservation Board? Have, we had two representatives on the planning board?
I think that may fall into the same pack. That's what I'm, it's an advisory board as well, but, like, you can't have two, two planning board members on the zoning board.
And Conservation would also be land use in some ways, presumably.
But it's also advisory. It's not, they, they have no decision-making power on their own.
So maybe we can...
So it may be okay, but we'll have to look into that. And either Jason may have to withdraw his planning board interest, or I may have to withdraw my Energy Committee interest.
Should we, or should we not state whether we would otherwise support his?
I would, I would support Jason fully as a planning board member.
With that one potential complication.
If, if we need a motion, yeah, I, I would make the motion that we recommend Jason as a planning board member.
I don't think we've ever done a vote before.
The, the select board has asked us to now.
Oh, okay. They're running guidelines when they just put that out there? They're like...
Not at this point, I believe. It's more, I think, just advisory. I mean, it's a third decision ultimately anyway.
Right.
But they want our feedback before they make decisions.
That's what happened for me as well.
That's right, and you came in, correct.
Yeah.
When we saw this.
So we have a motion to support Jason?
Yeah.
Want to go to a second and have a vote, or?
Yeah, you have a second.
You have a second? Oh, I'm sorry, I, I...
Yep.
I missed out in the mix of the conversation. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, the motion passes, and we recommend Jason to the select board with the potential to figure out whether all of that works.
I think my appointment question is on the select board agenda meeting for the 26th, 24th, 26th, something like that, so we can resolve it before then.
Okay. All right, so with that, we can move on to applications and public hearings. Our first application is a continuation of a public hearing. This is the Yeton Road Development, parcel 213014, continuation of public hearing on a site plan review application from Hess Engineering on behalf of YTN TMH LLC to develop an approximately 6,000-square-foot building with first-floor commercial space and two residential units on the second floor, along with associated site and range improvements and site improvements to support a potential future Phase II. So you might remember, this is the application that we've given several continuations to, including well beyond at this point the initial 65 days, and we have to decide where to go now, and Joseph, if you have an update, then that would be good to hear at this point, I suppose.
Yep. Excellent. So I spoke to Martha Swatz this morning, who is the property owner and applicant on the development, you know, and as it, as sort of outlined in the, in the memo, this is the last meeting within the timeline extension that the board last granted, so if the board were to continue this again, there would also need to be a timeline extension granted. So Martha advised me that she has a new business partner working with her on the development and is making some pretty substantial revisions to the plan. However, as a result of that, the, the changes to the plans are several months out at this point. She has an environmental engineer who needs to step in first, but that individual is not available until mid-September, and only once that work is done can her site plan engineer begin reconfiguring. The changes to the plan that she described to me were removing the second floor of the building, and also, she would like to build the second phase at the same time. So instead of one building with a site work to support a second building, she would like it to be two commercial buildings with no second floor. Other changes may arise in that process, as far as things like parking unclear at this time, but that would be certainly, she suggested certainly well beyond September for those changes to be actually available. She said that essentially, if the board does want to continue it, it would need to be at the very least October, possibly likely beyond then. Or if the board did deny the application and asked for a resubmital, she asked, or she stated that she would then want to approach the select board to ask for a fee waiver on a new application. So that was, that was what, that was what she spoke of this morning. She was not able to attend tonight's meeting, unfortunately, but she wanted to, me to share that update with you.
And so she's not actively seeking to withdraw at this point? Okay.
Correct. She didn't specifically say withdraw. She said if the board decides to continue it again, it would need to be well beyond September. If the board decides to deny without prejudice, then she would just ask for a waiver, fee waiver from the select board before reapplying in the future. Again, likely at least a few months out on those revised plans.
So I have some thoughts about this, but I'll throw to the rest of the board first, I suppose.
Waiver of what, John?
No, I said, I have a few thoughts about this, but...
I was just curious what the waiver that she was requesting, if we...
Of application funds?
Yeah, she wanted to go to the select board if she reapplied and ask the select board to waive application fees on a new application if she were to...
We don't have discretion to grant that, though.
Yeah, that's, that's...
She would ask the select board for a waiver essentially before she res submits, and then if the select board grant that, then she would have to pay the fees for the new application.
So we've conceptually heard three iterations. The original application with the one building, residential apartments up top, future pad. Then we heard last month, one building, no apartments up top. And now we're hearing a third iteration, commercial building, no residential units, and now the second commercial building at the same time.
Correct. That's the latest that I have, is the, the two buildings, no second floor.
So let's open the hearings so we can move it along.
Do we have any, do we have any preliminary comments? We just want to have the hearing first and then...
I'm ready to move to...
Okay.
Discontinue, or to deny the application.
Without prejudice, yeah.
Right, unless you, I mean, but we should...
I, I would agree with that.
We should probably open the floor to public comment in case anyone hears...
I just wanted to see how the board felt before we got there.
I agree with Phil.
I think we've discussed this. I think... I think we've discussed this. I think there's, there have been too many changes to, for the people who were originally notified to have kept up with, and I feel like it's unfair to a Butters to drag this process along. I think once we have a clean application, we'll notify them.
And even re-notifying a Butters, we accepted an application that's substantially different.
Right.
So, alright. So it is 7:03. I will open a public hearing. Would any members of the public like to speak to this application? No? Okay. It is still 7:03. I'll close our public hearing. And entertain a motion?
Findings of fact.
We should do findings of fact, yes.
I would offer the first finding of fact that we accepted the application and it was subsequently asked to be held while the applicant made changes, and we have not yet received changes as, as proposed. We've heard of changes, but we have not received changes that were a result of the first hearing.
Finding of fact, we have insufficient information to approve an application.
Thank you for paraphrasing.
Finding of fact, we are past our timeline without granting more extensions.
Yes. Or we've already granted one extension, and we would be looking at granting a second extension to yet, a yet unknown date. Okay.
It appears that the applicant is not prepared to come forward within another 65-day extension.
Yeah.
Are you ready for a motion?
One last finding of facts. The application, as per the applicant, seems as though it's going to be substantially changed from its, its initial state. I'm ready for a motion, yeah.
I'll, I'll move that we deny the application without prejudice and encourage the applicant to file a, a new and updated application when it is complete, citing the findings of facts we just mentioned.
I would second that.
Alright, motion and second to deny without prejudice. Are there any further comments? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? Okay, the motion passes. The application is denied without prejudice. And we welcome a new application from the applicant and see what that looks like. Okay, so up next are several new applications. So just for members of the public and applicants. So our process here will be to first look at the application and determine whether it is complete, and then move on to a discussion of, a more detailed discussion of the application and make a determination. Well, start to learn about the application, see if we can approve it or not, and hold a public hearing as time becomes appropriate if the application is complete this evening. So with that said, we have item B under applications is a subdivision application, parcel 218030 Bingstil Road. Application from WeBuild NH LLC on behalf of Bingstil LLC to subdivide parcel 218030 into three lots of 1.75, 1.492, and 5.922 acres. The application also proposes extending and improving approximately 750 to 900 feet of Bingstil Road, including beyond the end of current town maintenance and providing a turnaround. And I'm going to get my own paperwork out here. Alright. So if the applicant, it's, it's a representative of the applicant here, would like to say a few words about this application before we determine its completion to introduce the application?
Good evening. Yes, I'm Craig Francisco with Bedford Design Consultants. There is, well, I think we all, hopefully we all know about where this is, the end of Bingstil Road. I read Joseph's memo, thank you very much. And the existing Bingstil Road is about 12 or 13 feet wide travel, travel way. So we're, what we're proposing, there's a turnaround about 400 feet prior to the, to our property line. So we're proposing to widen Bingstil from that turnaround up to our property line and extending it roughly 300 feet. So we, but we can't, well, let me back up a little bit. We did some quite extensive research trying to determine the width of Bingstil right of way. And I didn't find a road layout in state archives or anywhere. So looking at the evidence, it appears to be a three-rod road. Using three rods, and as steep as the west side of the fill is, you can't get a 20-foot wide road or through there. It just won't fit. That's why the existing was 12 for that matter. But we can get a 16-foot wide road with one-foot shoulders. That's about as wide as we can get. So that's the one waiver we will need. The other thing we met with Joseph and DPW, two people from DPW a year ago, maybe, something like that. There's a pretty good runoff issue coming down Bingstil Road to the Butters, the Beaman's properties, by my understanding. And the water comes from a wetland that's just, I won't say it. If you go up the hill, the Bingstil Road goes to the right, and there's a Woods Road goes straight ahead. There's a big wetland right there. The culvert underneath the right of way is a 12-inch CMP that's been there forever. It's collapsed. So the water doesn't go through the culvert, and across the road, it goes down the road. So, and I don't see it in our plans, and I apologize, must be a drafting thing, but anyway. We're proposing to replace that 12-inch culvert with an 18-inch culvert. It drains onto our property, so it probably shouldn't be an issue. That should take care of, should certainly help, I shouldn't say it's going to fix, but certainly help the runoff problem down at Beaman's property and the whole stretch down through there. So I'm asking for a couple waivers basically for that reason. Hopefully we can get the road obstructed, and the selectman can accept it to make it, make it a portion, make that, that portion of the Class 6 road make a Class 5. It'd be kind of weird, lack of a better term, to have the town plow up to a point, make a big snowbank, then hire a subcontractor to plow a private road for another 300 feet. That's not going to, that wouldn't work very well. So that's basically just one of, we're trying to get three lots. I believe we meet all the state subdivision application requirements. I have not submitted yet, because I used the active wait to plan it work once, at least. In case I've got to move lot lines, because they're, state's kind of expensive. So that's, that's basically the gist of it. I'll certainly answer any and all questions if I can.
To clarify, you're asking for a waiver for the drainage study or...
Yeah, and that's, that's part of the reason with that culvert, that drainage study. It's pretty hard to put in HydroCAD how a collapsed culvert, how do you model a collapsed culvert? I'm a surveyor, so I don't know anyway, but I assume you can, but it'd be obvious we're changing the whole drainage pattern. So as the water's not going to go down to the Beaman's, it's going to go through our property to the big wetland in the back. Where it's supposed to go, where it used to go, where...
So when you say you're changing the whole drainage bed...
Just that one, that one culvert.
Okay.
The culvert's right here.
I guess I'm, I'm wondering about the potential impact of that and if a waiver is appropriate here.
Impact going to be drying up Beaman's front yard, for one thing. That's one impact. I mean, it's a large wetland. It's, I can't imagine making any hazardous problems down there. We can't.
So, so, and you're understanding by replacing and expanding that culvert, you're improving the situation from where it currently is?
Correct.
Can I ask, where, where are you proposing the turnaround? Is that on the northern property boundary or the southern property boundary? Right side of the page or left side of the page?
Right here. Across that area.
Up, near the intersection of Woods Road and Bingstil Road?
Yes.
Thank you.
North is up, so I didn't, when you said north and south, I was, I'm thinking east.
The north arrow is just, just to the left of notes, so...
The fill?
Yeah.
It's this hatched area here?
Yeah, the south, the crosshatch area is 50 by 50. 40 by 40, I believe.
Is the turnaround in that third lot?
Yes. We were hoping to give an easement to the town. We make it part of the road. We can either make an easement or whichever the town wants. I, we don't really care. Or we can use it for drainage.
So right now we're trying to figure out if it's complete before we move on to other issues.
Do we have, so the applicant is seeking waivers? Do we have those in writing, or do we simply accept the application contingent upon those waiver requests? That's a process question for us.
I can give them to you in writing right now.
It's more about our process, sorry. I'd kind of like to hear input from our road agent on the proposed change, since he's in our audience.
An input that would affect our acceptance of the application and not...
What's that?
An input that would affect our acceptance of the application and not our approval?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
With such large wetlands and such potential concern for drainage, is, is this complete without a drainage plan?
That is what I was, I was asking as well, yeah.
I do understand and appreciate upgrading the culvert in size as well. I just think there's more to it than...
I mean, we may very well be improving it, or at least in theory. That doesn't mean that there is not an impact to study, just to cross our Ts and make sure everything.
Part of my point though also was the drainage study is going to not just the wetland and replacing the culvert, it's going to be the new road, extending the road. So is 16 feet going to be adequate? If not, are we going to have to do, I don't want, I don't want to do a study, revise it, and do another study and revise it.
So are you proposing...
I can do a drainage study.
Sorry.
Saying, I'm trying to say I won't do a drainage study. I just want to make sure I'm doing a drainage study and something that will be approved.
So...
With a bowl.
So before we, a, a relevant question here might be, just to, I think you explained a little bit as already, but the road improvements. So are these up to town standards then for a public road?
Not, not width.
Not width?
Cross-section needs, but not, not width. We're making it better, but we're not...
Yeah. And would you accept, expect it to be accepted by the select board as a public road? And I guess it's already a public road, but not a...
Yeah, this is not...
It is a public road, but not a...
This is different than a private road, because it's already a public road, and he's...
But it's not the Class 5 standards.
He would be improving it.
Yeah.
I think the town has to maintain it once it's improved, don't they?
If you accept it as a Class 5. If you upgrade it to a Class 5.
Yeah.
I've done this a couple of times. The selectman have to upgrade it from a Class 6 to a Class 5, pending construction.
Which is where the turnaround comes in.
Yeah. I mean, it's already a town road.
If the theoretically, so the way that, one way to think about that is, you know, the planning board subdivision approval doesn't automatically reclassify it.
Right.
But, you know, the select board certainly could use that in determining how to proceed about reclassification. Theoretically, the planning board could approve a subdivision on a Class 6 road, subject to limitations, criteria, even without a reclassification, but that is something to keep in mind.
It could be, I guess it could, and I think I've seen other examples where the maintenance of the Class 6 portion of the road is still required to be done by private contractors.
So you would like this to be accepted as a, as a public road?
Yes.
Okay. And that'll be up to the select board. And they'll have to answer the question, if you, we go by this plan, if the width is enough or not.
Sure they're going to rely on highway department, you guys, quite a bit, so that's, that's why I'm starting here. Well, I started meeting with you guys earlier.
Would, would you like to speak to this at this point?
Yeah, so, so just in my opinion, I, I would like to see if the board would accept putting an escrow together, have these guys put an escrow and just have our town engineer look at it to see what it would take to bring it up to spec.
Okay.
It's not, it's not complicated, and it shouldn't be a huge expense. But it'll take a lot of the guesswork out.
Are you suggesting you'd rather see it built to current road standards, as opposed to the 16-foot road that's being proposed?
That would, like, like you said, it would depend on the three-rod, it would depend on the classification, and so, so our engineer would have a better understanding of how to put us in, in developer, in a situation where we work for the whole business.
Thank you.
I think having an engineer's estimate might be prudent to see. It makes me hesitant to think that there might be a potential road that's built, and it's not at spec.
And so, so having an engineer do some work on this
Yep.
could be post-acceptance or not.
Okay.
So the question is, do, do we accept this as complete? And I mean, for, for the applicant, I mean, if we don't accept it as complete now, in some ways, it can be a positive, because we don't start the clock ticking yet. And if we're going to ask for the same thing anyway.
So theoretically, if, because we're not, you know, we're not accepting this with a condition of the, the select board accepting, right? It's just this application. So with this application, would we be looking at a, like, is there a road maintenance plan? Because there's no expectation of it being accepted or not being accepted. So if it's just, you know, this right here, they're like, is there a road maintenance plan, or is there an HOA plan, or is that, do we get into that at all?
That is within...
Oh, go ahead.
Sorry, go ahead, John.
No, please, go.
No, I was just going to say, that is within the board's purview under the subdivision regulations. So the subdivision regulations do have a provision that allows the board to determine roads or other, you know, other elements like that. So subdivision proposals, which will result in the creation of common areas, roads, or other common facilities, shall include a plan for the long-term ownership and maintenance, et cetera. So that is a piece of it. It's one where typically, since it's in the design criteria, that would be if the board accepts an application, the board would review that as one of the criteria. So it, as far as could an application be complete without it, that's sort of up to the board. But that is within the board's purview to, to look at and understand that in the subdivision review process.
I have concerns about accepting a road that's less than the current road standards, only because this is an existing town road. It is Class 6. But it's very likely that we could continue to see other proposals like this, and someone might come in and propose to take Bingstil Road all the way, you know, develop it all the way out to Texas Hill Road. And if we accept a proposal like that with a 16-foot wide section at the, through here, it's going to be a big impediment to future use on that road. And, and, you know, the, the other thing is that the properties on the, the west side of that road might be, we might receive, you know, applications to develop those. You know, the reason we have road standards is, is, you know, it's unfortunate that the first person to subdivide has to bear that cost. But I think we should think hard about approving a road built to a lesser standard than our current road standards. Especially since it's very possible the town may take it over and be required to maintain it.
I did write a letter to the Butters to the west, asking about possible getting an easement, slope easement or something like that, and they, I didn't get a response.
Okay.
I did try, that was back...
Yeah. It's just, so...
So with the road issues and the wetlands and drainage issues, do we feel comfortable accepting this as complete?
I, I don't.
And if we don't, we should probably, I mean, you're one person, so at this point, but if we don't, we should probably offer very specific guidance as to what we're looking for.
Let me ask a question about the drawings. In the application, I'm going through the checklist here of required items, and there's one item that I'm just having a hard time finding, year-round water courses. Could you help me find that on the Platts?
Through this wetland? That's it. That's it.
It's, it's the, from the culvert to the wetland?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm not sure to year-round either.
Okay.
Pretty close.
Can you, I'm trying to understand the nature of the wetland and then how the water moves through the culvert. Is the wetland on the west side of the road continually a wetland? Is it a vernal pool?
If you go to the second sheet with the topo on it?
Yep.
There's wetland up here.
Yep.
It's huge.
Okay.
It's got to be a vernal pool. It's not, it's deep, it's, there are large drainage, there we goes to that wetland. That's why I'm saying it's causing the problem out here. This drainage, I'll call it.
Is it like a stream?
There's water in it sometimes, yes.
Okay, so it's-
There's rocks and, yeah.
Okay.
There's a scour channel.
It's like a wash, if you will, almost, okay.
When you get back in here, again, it's pretty hummocky. Is it a vernal pool? I was there in April, I didn't hear anything, but I might have been too early. So I don't know, I'm sure back in here, there's, that's a big wetland off our property. So I'm sure somewhere in there is a vernal pool, yes.
Okay. So right now, the water, when it's spilling over the road from the wetland on the west side, instead of flowing down that course as maybe it would more effectively go, it's going down Binks Hill Road?
Some, some goes down, down through our property.
Uh huh.
But in a storm event-
Yeah.
Most of it goes down Binks Hill.
Thank you.
I certainly don't have a problem with an engineer reviewing our work. I mean, that's, that happens all the time, so.
Yeah.
I don't think, I don't think it has a direct bearing on this application, but I would note that several of the properties to the south of here have recreational trails on them that are of value.
Yeah.
There's a trail just south of me, I mean, literally from me to you, south of our property line.
Yep.
Or less.
Yep.
Look at our property.
Both, both off of Woods Road and off of Binks Hill Road, there are some nice loops out there.
Yes, there is.
Yeah.
You know, I think, certainly they're, they're not affected by this property, but it's, I don't think this development would negatively impact those, but-
I'm not even sure they're on our property.
No.
Real, real close to the property line up there, top of that hill.
Yeah.
I think they're on the Green Woodlands property.
Were there other questions?
Does the site, does it make any sense? Learning.
No, I'm, at this point, I'm not sure it does. But it may warrant that if we accept the application and go to hearing. And if we learn a bit more about the drainage and the wetlands and all that. So I guess, to return to the question before us, do we feel comfortable or not accepting the application as complete? And that's, I mean, I think it's, I think it's a good application in many ways, I just-
I mean, I can, how do I say this? I agree to do a drainage study soon. Because, I mean, I don't have a problem doing it, I just don't know what I'm designing, what I'm, what I'm studying yet. Am I studying a sixteen-foot wide road or, that's really the issue.
I know, Mike.
And a drainage easement down the side, like Joseph mentioned in his letter, that's no big deal.
And if we do do a larger road, that, that impacts-
Everything.
Exactly, yeah.
It seems that there's, if I recall correctly, there's, there's a little bit of a climb there, would, would bringing in material to bring the road bed up?
Then you're going to mess up, then you're going to mess up Beaman's yard even more. Have you thought about that? Beaman's the last house.
Which one is that?
The last house on the left.
But, no, I mean, I think once you get past there, I think that's where the grade, grade issues hit, don't they?
The issue is actually right across the road from Beaman's house.
Is it? That's the most elevation on that.
We have a little tiny retaining wall right there.
Oh.
Trying to make that work.
So you, are you, I mean, were you planning on bringing the existing road grade up a little bit to reduce the, the grade issues to the west of the road?
Do you want to give my bike a footwork in here?
Yeah, I'm in the same boat, sorry.
No, we're pretty much holding the existing elevation all the way through there.
Okay.
And mostly that's to Beaman's yard and driveway.
Yeah.
So I can't speak for the planning board from, I mean, from, I can't speak for the planning board. I can't speak for the select board, but from a planning board perspective, I would like to see if we're aiming for a accepted town road, that it meets our standards.
I agree with that.
If that's our goal, I mean, if we change our mind, what our goal is.
Well, where do we start? Because the Binks Hill Road is not to town standards for, I don't know how far.
No, but it's, my understanding is, I mean, just, your map shows it as Class V, but do you know for sure that-
It's only twelve feet wide.
Do you know that it's Class V through there, or is it Class VI through there? Do you know where the Class VI section starts?
The pile turns around at Beaman's driveway.
What was the question?
Where's the Class V end? I was understanding filed until the-
Pretty much where that, I believe, like where the slop heads up?
Right, her, just past her house, yeah.
Which is-
So is the current Class V then not to town, current town standards?
Yeah.
It's only twelve, thirteen, fourteen feet wide, fourteen to very much.
I, I measured the travel weight the other day. It's literally just about sixteen feet.
Okay, sixteen.
With no shoulders in it, so I can tell you that that road has very little use. So it's extremely narrow in the winter time when it's plowed. And so if we, if you don't make any improvements, we're just going to fight us wave.
Okay.
So I, I think for a small impact, we would have it our engineer, work with him to try to make some corrections, some improvements, we'd be in a better place. His plan is well laid out and his drainage, there's a lot of thought into his plan. It's not that it won't work, but I, I think with some help, he could have a lot of his answers, and your answers.
Better mousetrap.
So we'd be extending an existing problem in a sense by continuing to build more road, extending an already not-to-spec road.
Well, we don't know that until, until-
Yeah.
Right.
We might be able to find a way around, around that, you know, we can look at, so there's no determination until we look at it.
Done.
My concern is, you know, there's the existing portion of Class V, Binks Hill Road, which is Class V and maintained, may not meet our current specs either, but I think, you know, the town is already responsible for that. You know, I think to, if, if the town were to take on this incrementally developed portion of it, it would be additional cost if there were to be improvement costs. I think that this is the unique time to hold to our road standards if we have them, since we have them. And I, I do understand it's a challenge. And, and, you know, I think the other question that's been raised is, is bringing in our town engineer to consult, like, that would be a cost that would be borne by the applicant. Given that he's a surveyor and capable of that work on his own, I'm not sure it makes sense for us to bring the engineer in at this point.
Prior to even acceptance?
Prior to having the application accepted. I think if we accept the application as complete and we want the town engineer to review at that point, it would make sense.
Mike, do you have comments?
So the plan shows a fifty-foot right-of-way. But, Bob, what's a rod?
Sixteen.
Yeah.
Sixteen and a half.
Sixteen and a half feet. So we think this road is three rods?
Forty-nine and a half. Yes.
But if it's not well documented, it's an assumption, right?
Yeah. What I ended up doing is coming from some evidence down Binks, down Binks Hill Road. There's some monuments, some stone walls and things that kind of give you a forty-nine and a half foot rod. And if you go the other direction of Binks Hill, the same thing, there's some stone walls and things, thousand feet up the road, that are about forty-eight feet wide. It only makes sense that it'd be three rods, but there's no official documentation that it's three rods.
So it looks like that stone retaining wall is, is what's making the, the road so narrow.
The proposed one.
Yeah. No, no, the stone wall that's there in front of Beaman's.
Well, that, that's existing, right?
That's existing, I believe.
Well, to try to make it a consistent width, you're going to have an issue down here, where we show some gravel going real close to, real close to the roadway. If you make it wider, it might be an issue here. There will be an issue here, where the retaining wall is.
That's in front of-
I just don't like to regrade somebody's front yard and landscape, they can wipe everything out if I can.
You said you contacted Beaman's?
I emailed, I emailed Beaman's and wrote them a letter. She wrote me back. I contacted the people on the other side of the road, and they did not contact me back, didn't, did not reply.
Yeah.
If anyone else has, actually, we're not doing a public hearing yet, but, um-
We also can't hear you. It's very difficult.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
We're close enough to-
That's right. I'll lean forward, how's that? Really?
Oh? Hello? All right, so how do we, I just pulled that mic closer to me.
I think if we did accept this, though, I'd ask that we consider not recording any plats until our engineers accepted the road. As sort of a final stamp of approval. I know that's been a issue in the past from developments that went in twenty years ago and plats were recorded. And sort of didn't bite us, but could have more prudence if we, you know, held off on recording any plats until every Tia's daughter, Tia's cross and eyes are dotted.
So, I mean, I guess the question is, to accept this as complete, do we want more information about the road, given that it's not up to town specs? And we are, the applicant is seeking it to be taken on as a town road? And do we want more information about the drainage situation as is usually a condition for accepting an application as complete before we go forward? Not, not to in any way halt the application, just to get this information before we accept it and before we start the clock ticking.
Yeah, I'm not interested to jump into this, accepting it with a bunch of conditions. I'd rather wait until we have a complete application.
Yep.
But honestly, I'd like to see a street plat for this because of the proposed development to the existing right-of-way. We're going to deal with that a little bit later, but this, this is more than a, a private road, this is a, you know, an improvement to a public right-of-way.
Would we need a street plat if it's a ready part of a subdivision application? Joseph?
I guess we can clarify that.
Yeah, so it's a, so the, a street plat is a way that the planning board can approve a road. And it can be, so approving a road as a part of a subdivision can essentially serve the same function. So if, if enough information is shown on the subdivision plan, where the subdivision plan shows the full length of the road to the existing improvements, it can essentially serve the, the function as a street plat. I would, I would believe that you could have-
You wouldn't need that as a separate, yeah.
So it doesn't have to be separate, but I would like the details of this, of a street plat to be included in the subdivision application since it's part of the proposed development.
Mike?
I would, I don't know if there's a, a way that we can still hear from the public. I know we can't open up a hearing at this point, but it would be a loss not, that they came here and, and can't speak, so I don't know if there's a way.
I mean, there's, there's nothing preventing me from allowing the public to speak. Doing it outside of a public hearing can get a little bit, putting the carpe before the horse in some ways, in terms of process. So there are reasons not to do it. But that, let's leave that aside for a moment. Yeah, I would prefer to wait till a public hearing and assuming we don't get there tonight, that is.
Process-wise, the public hearing happens if we approve the application?
Yes. Well, if we, if we approve it as complete, if we accept, accept it as complete.
Okay.
Prior to and during the actual process of deliberations over the approval, we would-
Got it.
Have a public hearing.
Understood, thank you.
So I have just one more issue with all that.
Yes.
If they could think, who follows with the subdivision is not classified and applied? That creates a problem for me because we would plow androidways.
Mm-hmm. There's no turnaround or anything? Or snow, yeah.
They don't have an entrance that works.
Mm-hmm.
I, I guess we could ask for input from the select board on that.
Yeah.
Because it would, I mean, it's presumably not a very long section of road. If the town were to take over maintenance, it would eliminate the need of having a place to put snow.
And the select board-
The select board would also need to approve the building permits. If it's, if it's Class VI, we would not have the authority to do that. So, you know, I, I think it's somewhat presumptive of us to consider the subdivision if the select board is not prepared to issue building permits on that section of road, which is currently Class VI. So I would, I would feel that, you know, having input from the select board would be important.
Well, even at this point, it would be non-mining input, but I would imagine, or-
Yeah, yeah.
But still to get that kind of feel for the board, yeah.
In any subdivision on a Class VI road, I would advise certainly having plan notes, you know, saying as much, saying any building or development is subject to statute six seven four forty-one, approval of the select board and waivers, so.
Like, that could be a condition, like an either-or kind of condition, if it goes this way versus if it goes this way.
Right, that would be-
But, I mean, the, the other thing the select board could do would be to vote to, well, I don't know if the select board can do it or if the town has to do it, but they could vote to accept that section of road as Class V up to where it's maintained, and then there's no issue issuing building permits on it.
Issue at hand, are we accepting this as complete?
I would propose that we not accept this application at this time.
Okay.
I would make it a motion, sorry. I, I would cite that there's insufficient road detail and that the road details are not up to town road specs. So I, let me back up and say, I'm going to move that we deny the waiver request on the road details and, and ask that the plan come back with compliance of-
Also on the-
Subdivision regulations.
Also on the drainage study?
Yes. So let's deal with that as a separate one. Do you have that?
Oh, I see, you're just doing separate denials of waivers.
Yeah, so one, yeah, one is denial of the first waiver request is basically the, the motion at hand for the, for the road.
Okay.
A second.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Sensations? Okay, the motion passes.
Do we want to deal with the second waiver request for the-
Yeah, sure.
Drainage.
Might as well. I think it provides important input, I think.
I guess this is a tough one because the, the applicant doesn't have information on, I mean, they would be required to do an off-site improvement to replace that C, or is that, is the CMP on, on your, on her property?
It's technically on the Woods Road. But we have rights to it.
You have rights to it.
And I think regardless of whether the road gets brought to town specs or not, a drainage study would be helpful.
Okay. So I would move that we deny the waiver request for the drainage study and, and ask that when the applicant, application is brought back to us, it include both a road plan and a drainage study. In accordance with the subdivision regulations.
Is your consultant prepared to apply for a culvert application from the Wetlands Bureau?
I guess so. Yes, I'm the consultant, so yes.
Well, I thought you had Wetland scientist Thomas Sokolowski.
Yeah, I'll probably do it, rather than have Tom do it. Quicker if I did it than have Tom do it. Quicker if I did it than have Tom do it.
So we have a motion to deny the waiver request. We have a second?
Neil?
Second.
Oh, you're second, okay.
Yeah.
I thought Neil asked a question the first time. Okay, so motion and second, any further discussion? All in, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, okay, the motion passes. So it looks like we're gonna need a little bit more information before we're ready to accept this.
I need to make a 20-foot wide road with two to four-foot wide shoulders and ditches, and therefore I can't do it, to be blunt. It's not gonna fit.
The ability of the possibility of it not happening does not bring the onus on the planning board to allow something-
I understand, but I'm making a bad situation worse already.
Right, but if the town, if the onus isn't on the board to access something that might affect the town in the future.
I mean, if I may, and I can't speak for the highway department or the select board, I wonder if a conversation could happen where something mutually agreeable could be found that wasn't too much of a hardship, but still kind of answer to the town's needs of future development along that road.
I need to do two lots.
I need to talk.
With a driveway? I would still need frontage.
Okay.
So the planning board, as far as completeness, so far the two sort of items of the board, as I'm reading this, the board is looking to decline to accept. So the two items that the board is citing are the lack of full road plan and the lack of drainage study. Is that, is that?
Yes. Yes?
Could I be allowed to talk here a little bit? And I think I might be able to give you some guidance on going forward, so not wasting time and money on either side. I'm Bob Burdy and I'm-
Before you continue, can you, just wait one moment. Before you continue, could you wait one moment? I notice this, my call ultimately, how does the board feel about hearing any public comments right now outside of a public hearing?
I think if it's valuable to the applicant, I think we should entertain it.
Okay. Okay.
But I think we should ask any further comments, to be brief, because we do have a, we have other items on the agenda we need to get to tonight.
Brief and directly related to the incomplete items, we can hear. So come up to the-
My name is Bob Burdy and I'm Woodlands manager for Greenacre Woodlands. And we are butters to this project, and we are not opposed to that. Really, the issue becomes one of the road. And you have a public way, a Class Six road, where the public has access, but they're not responsible for keeping it up. I think Class Six roads are a real bad thing. And all towns, all planning boards have to deal with them sometimes. So our concern is, we started managing that property enough at Green Acres, but for the prior owners, Fisk and Monahan, the first harvest was in, that we did was in 1982. We did a subsequent harvest in 2001. And we've got one planned for another two or three years from now. So, there are some complications that the town and the developer or the owners are gonna see in the future. And one of it is, if the town road ends and this development goes in, you know, just from the road agents, you know, where's the snow gonna go? You know? And I think the real resolution to solving this is, is a commitment from the town to say, this is gonna be a Class Five road. And I think a lot of problems will go away. Our issue is, if this remains a public way, but the people who border it, including Greenacre Woodlands, are responsible for maintenance of it, and log trucks go up there once every 15 to 20 years, there're gonna be some problems. So, addressing the issue before it happens, I think really should be done. And if you need, you need a turnaround, and I don't think anybody's recognized where you're gonna put that turnaround. You're gonna be on private land. And I could say that Green Acres will be willing to give you an easement, no charge, to have a turnaround at the end of where their development is. So I think there's issues that need to be addressed, but they really are in the condition of the road and who's gonna own it and maintain it. As far as the wetland area, it's very minimal. We've passed over that in the past. And the swell on the downside of that, of that culvert will alleviate the problems. So, I just, we're not against the project. I think we'd be great neighbors to them, you know, hunting fish, walks, snowmobile, whatever. So, I think, but addressing that issue of the, who's gonna own that road and maintain it? And that's where the real problem comes in the future. But thank you for your time.
Thank you. Alright. If it's directly related to these waiver requests and well, be brief.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
My name is Heather Beaman. I live at the end of Bing's Hill Road, adjacent to the proposed subdivision. I have a few issues, a few questions, not many. One is the stone wall. And I have been assured that any work that's going to be done on that road in front of my property will be on the far side of the stone wall where it now exists. I came here seeking confirmation for that. Maybe it's a little premature, but that is one thing, one question I have that does affect only me. Drainage affects more people on the road right now, as it stands, than myself. Also, I'm not the only one who has a well in their front yard on that road. So these are all things I'm sure whoever's doing the road will take it into consideration. I'm sure it will be a professional job. I would like to know who would be responsible for any drainage problems that resulted during the building, the heavy equipment being moved, et cetera. I'd like to know who would resolve any issues with the integrity of a well being breached, the quality of the water, the water flow, anything to do with the well. I would certainly want to be assured that it would be handled in a timely way and not at the owner's expense. Since we're talking only about the road, that's really my main concern. I'd like to know who would take care of it if there was an issue. And I would like to know that it would be done in a timely way.
Thank you. And I think this is one of the reasons, the type of reason why we're asking for some of this information to be clarified.
Right, yes, yes. I'm very pleased to see that, and I'm very pleased with how thorough you've been. Thank you for letting me speak. I know you have a big agenda.
Thank you for taking the time to come.
Sure.
We need an official motion to-
It would be-
We have another person wants to-
Oh, yes. Sorry, I missed that.
Linda Buffington, and I live on Bing's Hill Road. It would be up past my house if they would start the roadwork. Well, in front of my house, sorry, I gotta put glasses on. It's only 15 feet wide. Two cars cannot pass at all. UPS truck, delivery trucks, anybody, you have to stop. And in wintertime, someone, somebody's gotta back up. That's not even in this plan to be corrected. So if you allow the subdivision, there's more traffic that's gonna come down. And I just don't see, I mean, you have to come up that road to look at it. The washout from the drainage comes down into my driveway because my house sits lower than the road. And we already deal with that. So I just, I just don't see it happening. Oh, and also for the emergency vehicles, right now. At Mrs. Beaman's house, the town plow, sorry, but the new drivers, they don't know how to turn up there. So they have to back down to make a turn. And sometimes they don't do it because they're big snowstorms. So my significant other does that every morning of a snowstorm, the entire road, to make sure that emergency vehicles can get up there. But we're certainly not gonna go up and do further up on it. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask one question of the board first?
Sure.
I know where you're headed, so I better ask my question now. So, would the board be against this being a private road, privately maintained section of Class Six road?
It raises the issues that Joe raised about snow and-
Plow and somebody else has to pick it back up again.
Is it a public road right now?
Yes.
It's, and it's currently a public road.
It is. Privately maintained, public, I guess. Privately maintained portion of Class Six road.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think it affects my feeling on it at all, honestly, because, you know, I think as soon as the development is associated there, you know, it's, I still think the road needs to meet that standard as part of this project.
Or at least as close to it as we can somehow agree upon if there is impediments to that.
It's unfortunate, I mean, I think this is, this is the type of good development we need, but, you know, it, roads are expensive and sometimes difficult, and sometimes they're abandoned for good reason.
Very quick?
I'd like to make comment on the road.
If you could.
There are people online who wouldn't be able to hear you otherwise.
For the recording as well.
Jay Matthews, Linda Buffington, Sniff and Other. I've been down Bing's Hill Road with her for now for close to 20 years. And at best, that road is just passable. The road agent does his best he can, but the road is narrow. And there's a bank on the right side going up that's pretty steep. And there's a lot of watershed that comes off that bank that needs to be addressed. And as we expand, which we're going to, that road definitely needs to be upgraded. Either the town has gotta do it, or we got a developer, we might be able to get help us do it and defray the cost. But it needs to be done, there's just no other way around.
Okay.
And the amount of work that's gonna go into that road, his development up there, it's a one-lane drive. I mean, people all sum along for the next period of time, are gonna be off the road, letting traffic go by. It's gonna be, it's not an easy road to navigate.
Thank you.
My name is Ryan Carr. Wanted to just kind of introduce myself. I am the applicant, just a little bit of history here. I did buy this piece of land a couple of years ago. I have a home right on the corner of Reservoir and Highland Street, the yellow house there. At least 100 people in this town have told me what a nice job we've done with the house. So I think that's indicative of what the plan of the subdivision would look like, quality of work and what have you. What happened with this, I bought it originally, and I thought, okay, wanna put a house up on the top of the hill. Obviously, if you've been up there, you've seen the views that it has, it's amazing. Little bit cost prohibitive when it comes to terms of high interest rates and construction costs and things like that. I do know that because I own a construction company. So I said, well, this would make sense. And then some things in my life had kind of changed and gone some other ways, that I had some other professional commitments. But I am here at least six months out of the year. I'm the coach, the resident coach of the college, and I have young kids at the school. Anyway, I guess where I'm getting at with that is, the subdivision actually makes this quality development, right? Rather than just one house sitting at the top of a hill that we could have rights and by law to access and do that anyway. The subdivision actually makes this a quality subdivision, and we're not opposed to wanting to help out with these road costs. We don't want, certainly don't want to bear all the costs because then it becomes cost prohibitive again. And now we've got a bunch of clear land that just sits up there and still have a Bing's Hill problem, Bing's Hill, you know, with problem. Right? So when we talk about this, our engineers here that we hired have been very happy with. They're working on a couple of projects for us, so I mean, they're proactive, they're creative, they're logical, right? And what you see here is a good design. It's a good idea. We welcome the feedback that you have. And procedurally, I didn't know that we were actually coming here for the waivers. Now I understand that. I wish I'd kind of read up a little bit more before I got here, but that's okay. But anyway, I think what we wanna, we wanna work with the town, we wanna work the residents. We're very mindful of that. I've got a lot of history in this town. I went to college here, and by no means are we just trying to stuff a subdivision in to make some money and get out of here. The higher lot is, I did end up selling this piece of property to some friends of mine from Massachusetts. They're building themselves a house up top, and I'm gonna be taking the lower lot for myself. And then the middle lot would be, would be sold, or we build it for someone. That's, that's the plan for the property. So I understand there is some impact in terms of traffic, but you're talking three single-family homes, not a ton of traffic. Good tax base coming into the town with these properties, okay? More so than we're getting right now. So I think when we talk about some of the issues that we have at this, it's also important to talk about the pros of having the subdivision. And I haven't heard anyone talk about the real pros of this yet. So I wanna make sure that I could bring my face to say, say, listen, this is, this is a good development, this is, right? You started this meeting with a conversation about a housing problem. Right? Here we are with good quality housing, so let's not just poo-poo it right away. Let's say, okay, how do we work together?
If I may, I, at least speaking for myself, I'm not poo-pooing this. I support this application. But it's also the job of the board to protect the town's interests.
I understand it 100%.
And, so we, I think we do all wanna go forward with this and make this work somehow. And we wanna make sure that we have all the information we need and protect the town's interests. And that's really where we're at, and-
Which is good. I just, I think we have to be mindful that trying to get the road to that standard might be a little bit unrealistic, okay? Just given the whis and the problems of the excavation you have there. Again, it's, it might put the project out of reach, and now we still have a road with problem. Right? So I'm, and I'm glad the people are here, I'm glad this gentleman was here because I didn't, I hadn't seen him previously. And we got a lot of good feedback tonight, right? I think the goal from here should be, without tying this thing up for another year, it's a, you know, I wish sometimes we could just get everyone who's involved in a room, it's okay, how do we do this that makes sense for everyone? Right? Rather than have to stretch these things out months over time. And I understand that's the process, but at least we got some good feedback. I wanted you guys to understand that there's some names and faces here. We are, we do wanna be proactive about this, we do wanna be responsible about it. I am gonna live in one of the lots myself. So, you know, that's the intention here. So I thought that was important, you guys got to say that. Thank you everyone for your comments.
And thank you very much.
Thank you. I do think this is a nice little subdivision.
Yeah.
I love it.
That being said, we have a full evening.
New diligence.
Three more applications.
So I wanna say, John, thank you for letting those that showed up tonight speak. I thought that was very important. And I think it's time for the applicant, maybe, and our town engineer, and Joseph, to maybe iron out some of the details and bring it back. And I hope to see it go forward, and I know why Trevor speaks so highly of the applicant, so.
Who's Trevor?
Alright.
Inside.
We have a motion from anyone?
I would move that we not accept the application at this time and pending, you know, the complete submission of-
Further information.
Required, required information.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, okay, the motion passes. Oh, abstained, and one abstention. The motion passes. We do look forward to seeing you again with this extra information. And we hope something can be worked out here for sure. Thank you. Alright.
Next road.
Exactly. Thank you, Phil. Item C, street plat application. Establish private road to parcel 237001. Application from Alan Barnard and you and Crossley to establish an approximately 1,200-foot private road to serve as road frontage for parcel 237001. The private road would begin on the west side of Mayhew Turnpike and cross adjacent parcel 236016. And that. Good evening.
Alan Barnard, Representative. Blenning Yu and Thomas Crossley.
Okay.
Try to attend electronically, I don't know if they're able to.
Can you confirm their honor?
Blenning Yu is there.
Yes. That's good. Of course, I have a written authorization. I have two of them because, as thorough as Joseph is, he wanted the application signed as well as the other documents. So I'm double demure here, so. That being said, this is not a subdivision. That's a nice thing to start off with. It's not an existing town road. I've heard one application denied without prejudice, the next one denied without enough information. I've got a pile of information, so you won't have problems with that. To start off with, I have my, I have their waivers. I have their waivers listed out in the reasoning. I also have a caption, which you might have already read, what we're doing. This property, and the only reason I'm starting off with this is because we are asking for waivers, and after just listening to you, I know you like to make your job easier, and I hope I can do that. So the property is at the top of Hoyt Hill, headed towards Hebron, where I'm from. Don't pick on me there because we don't have affordable housing, and...
It used to be Plymouth, so you're okay.
Okay, that's correct. This part of Hebron was. You should have kept Newfoundland.
Yeah, I always say that.
So I'm glad you know that. 1792, we decided that we were too far to come over here. So, matter of fact, we're on the town line, this property is. We're dealing with a 100 and... I'm rounding it off, 107-acre lot, which actually has a deeded 50-foot right-of-way easement into the property. It's not actually landlocked. Beautiful thorough linguistics that, you know, town planner puts together. The only thing he put in there, he said it was landlocked, which I disagree with. It's landlocked the building, it's not landlocked the use, because we have a 50-foot right-of-way that goes in there that was actually deeded in 1977. It existed well over 20 years prior to that. So it's a way that's been used for 70-plus years, but it was actually defined in 1977 as 50 feet. That being said, Joseph and I have discussed this several ways, and we're trying to make sure we follow the law in regards to the building permit application, as well as to try to protect the town and the planning board for the decision-making on the road, a private road. We're attempting to do the street plat so it actually qualifies to obtain a building permit. The goal of the owners right now, the goal is to build one house. In the future, they'd like another house for their family. It'd be a family compound, so it's not a subdivision. The reason we're asking for the two homes at this point is because the right-of-way passes through the another property, the PQROZ Fund LLC, which actually is the... That is where the request is for the private road. And to make it a private road, and under your standards in your book, you actually have to have it serviced three sites or three places. It goes through theirs, and then it goes to the property we're talking about, the 107 acres. So by asking for the two places, that makes it three, so it meets street standards. Otherwise, it's a driveway, and then we get another whole ball of wax. So in the process, the Ning Yu and the Thomas Crossley agree if the street plat is approved with the following waivers and recorded at the Graft County Registry of Deeds, a waiver of municipality liability on a form provided by the town of Plymouth, New Hampshire will be recorded. Three notes have been added to the street plat as suggested as part of the waiver request that during the review process was suggested. There's no issues. We've added those already. I have them here, but you have them in front of you as well on your thing, on the application packet. So we have three items we'd like to have waived, again, suggested by your town planner. Number one, checklist item number one, subdivision regulations. This is a fairly simple one, I hope. Allowing the recordable plat to be at a scale of 1 inch to 200 feet provides for the entire properties in the area to be shown on the plan. As the lots are 28.11 acres and 107.62 acres allows for easy review as a presentation plan of the proposed private road. The area will be at a scale of 1 inch to 60 feet. I do have a plan 1 inch to 60 for the 28-acre lot that we're actually passing through with 2-foot topography on it to show you that, and I have grades available on that section. I even have a photograph at the road, what it looks like even, and, you know, Joseph was very accommodating, and we... I took him up there, and we drove up and down the road, so he knew what it was. So that's one, and I didn't know if you want to address these one at a time, or you'd like to go through them all and then address each one again. The first one's pretty simple. Let's get a yes to something.
I think you can keep going through at this point, and we'll let you know if we want to ask you to have any questions.
Okay. So that's number one. Number two, checklist number 18, which is the road cross-sections and profiles of the proposed private road. It's already constructed and on the ground, and the plan's showing the contours and the statement of the existing grades. So it's already there, and it's functional, working, and no issues. So that's one of the reasons for the waiver on that. Number three, waive checklist item number 19. Drainage plans, existing culverts are shown on the recorded survey 6678, as well as the plan that was done. This is actually on two plans at the Registry of Deeds, showing the culverts and their locations. And then also copies of the survey of said plan have been included in the application along with additional full-size copies will be provided to the board at this meeting. I have additional copies here if you don't have enough of that information in front of you. The other thing, those are the waivers to get to the point for further discussion. I do have other input in regards to the private road, but if you don't mind, I'll just hold this up. I can give it to you if you want to see, but this is what it will look like at one of the settings, so you don't actually be able to really visualize the road and the topography, so we make it easier on you. All right, so that... So a waiver on the first one is for the recordable plan if it's approved, because there's reasons to show the entire 107-acre lot with this lot, and there are other properties they have up off of Winter Berry Lane, which we did at an informational, but we're not asking for waivers on that, but all that will be on the lodge plan. If you want to see the lodge plan, I have that right there as well. And I actually have improved a few things, like some of the numbers and stuff, so they're readable. That's what the 100-200 plan will look like, and I have copies put in front of everybody if the application's done to be completed.
Okay.
I have this stack of material and a briefcase full of stuff that they'll look at. So that's... So I think I have plenty of information if it's necessary. I'd be glad to address any of the questions in regard to the waivers to help get the application accepted so we can go into review.
Are there any concerns about the waivers from anyone?
No, at this time.
If I can take a moment to the side to say thank you to Joseph for including in the staff reports this time around citation of relevant pieces of our regulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joseph.
And thank you too for me. Now you got a piece of that.
My one concern is about the waiver for the plans for storm drains and culverts. Can you repeat why you want that one waived?
Because they're in, existing and working.
Okay.
And no issues.
Okay.
Matter of fact, just to elaborate on that, this road was utilized for a heavy timbering operation probably at least, I think, five years ago now, maybe six. And that road handled tractor trailer trucks continuously in and out of there, and that road only has one little tiny wash up in the hill on the private property, not in this section. And it's all well-established, well-vegetated. The new path is vegetated even over the gravel. That'll need to be regraded and new gravel put down when they get ready to build, which they will. Also, just one other thing to elaborate on that. If this is approved with these waivers and we go into this and accept the liability release waiver form, the town would absolutely have no responsibility anyhow, which would... It kind of covers all the things you were just kind of talking about on the last one, because this is private.
So as we're seeing this then, so there is no actual change of conditions proposed to the road or anything else? And the fact that it may not meet our current standards for even a private road in a subdivision where the liability waiver comes in?
Correct.
Okay.
And the only reason we can get to there with a liability release waiver is to do the street plat and have it approved under the RSA so that is applicable, because right now it's usable except for building. There's other things you could do on that road and access the property that doesn't require a building permit.
Got it.
So it's actually a protection for the town from that standpoint as well.
Aren't you pretty close to the height of land in the saddle there?
We're right up... We're on top of Hoyt Hill, yes.
Yes.
We reached the pinnacle of Hoyt Hill on that 107-acre lot.
Interesting.
Where the building spots at is not. It's... I can show it to you on the plan if you want to see.
I'm talking about where the culvert is.
Oh.
Which... No, no, no. The culverts... The culverts are actually not the height of Hoyt Hill on the Route 3A section, but not the height of land itself.
So...
Is that anything in the air?
Well, how much flow is this culvert getting?
Well, it's not overflowing. There's... They're all 15, except for the lowest one is an 18.
Is it just surface flow?
The surface... Just ditch runoff, yeah. There's no streams crossing.
That's what I was getting at.
Yes, okay.
How do we feel about completion?
I guess I feel fairly comfortable with this only because it's an existing right-of-way and not proposed for a subdivision, but I do think that my brain is going to what happens if there are further subdivisions proposed for...
We can put a condition on it. That will be the next part of this application if we do accept it.
Well, if it may, if I may.
You may.
This will answer your question, and there's your three... There's your notes that are proposed, which we handle with just what you're saying. And that proposal from the land planner, Joseph, and my clients are willing to accept those.
Okay, so I'm going to read Planning Board Note 1. It says, "Any future subdivision, commercial development subject to site plan review or development of more than two dwelling units on parcel 23701," which was my concern, "with access or road frontage only on this substandard street plat road shall require the road be improved to meet the road standards of the Plymouth subdivision regulations as they may exist at that time." That is my concern. Thank you.
Well, and you can also thank Joseph for that. He's the one that wrote it, and I don't think we changed any wording on that, so if it didn't flow smoothly, you know, talk...
Thank you for your diligence on that. So I'm okay with accepting this as complete. Sounds like you are, Phil?
Yep, I am actually.
Any other concerns?
No, that was my only concern as well.
Motion?
Motion, I'll move that we accept the application as complete.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, the motion passes. It's accepted as complete, so now we go on to considering in more detail the application and eventually holding a public hearing and...
Thank you.
Seeing where we land.
We actually have to move into a public hearing for us to present any...
Yep.
You can... You can present before the... The applicant can present before the public hearing. We're not disconnecting to hear feedback from the public.
John, I'm going to suggest that we not consider approval tonight, that we plan to continue this so that if there are any butters who wish to have comment, we can keep this... We can continue this to our next monthly meeting, but I think we should accept comment of people who are here now.
What is the concern for more butters?
I just... Like... I like to have... My sense is that there's concern about this application from the public, and I want public to have opportunity to... Plus, I don't want us to feel pressured to make a decision on this tonight.
And I'm not saying we are going to make a decision tonight. I'm just kind of curious for your reasoning.
Not that I see anything wrong with this.
Also, that being said, we can still ask for approval tonight if the board feels comfortable.
Sure.
But I understand your concern.
Okay, thank you.
So...
And you can ask for anything you want.
There's no pressure on the board.
No, I know.
It's not that they want us to start building tomorrow.
Okay.
And before we move on, as Joseph rightly put in the... His staff report, it is worth considering whether this is a regional impact, given that one of the criteria, not all by any means, but one of the criteria for regional impact is proximity to a town line. And my own read is that's pretty much the only criteria it meets for a regional impact, but I...
I'm going to deal with that one really quickly by saying I'm going to move that this is not a development of regional impact.
Okay, and is there a second?
I second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? They're all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. So it's not a development of regional impact, okay? Okay, fair enough. Do we have any questions for the applicant?
Do you have the deed with you?
Absolutely, yes, I do.
Can I see it, please?
Actually, I submitted copies of that.
Oh, did you?
Did you hand those out? I was just wondering, because I included it in my application packet, but I do... I have a copy of...
I can just borrow it.
Well, actually, the most important one is I have extra copies of this, is the right-of-way.
Yep.
I brought three copies of that with a highway because I thought that might be a concern.
Thanks, Alan.
You do.
I have the Ning Yu, Tom Crossley deed right here for you. That's in there. And I also have a copy of the survey of both properties. This is of this one here, which shows the right-of-way running through the property. This is recorded plan and registry deeds. And actually, this is one of the issues... I'm going to speak to that in just a second. One of the issues that was done in 2021. And this street plat issue in the RSA has not been taken to court yet and decided, and that's why we're going right by the letter of the law doing the street plat. Actually, on this plan done in 2021, because... And again, this hasn't been challenged, but a land surveyor like myself actually has the right to record the plan and establish this street plat. But again, it's not in the statute, but it's in the surveying statute, and that's what this individual did. It wasn't being. It was in 2021. They recorded it in accordance with the certifications we're allowed to under the statute. It says, "I certify there's a survey plan that's not a subdivision pursuant to the title and that the lines of streets and ways shown are those of public or private streets or ways already established. No new ways are shown." And the survey had the right to do that, to record the plan of the easement deed that I just handed you.
Yep.
So in fashion, the tax map should have been updated, which would be one of the official maps of the town, showing this, and it has not. So we're actually correcting that situation from the town not following up on this, correcting their plans by doing what we're doing now as well. And that's... I know I keep stacking them up on there, but that was the plan that was done of the existing lot. And also, as to that, which I brought up to Joseph, there was two lots, there was actually three originally, that this right-of-way served. And then a couple of years ago, and I have a copy of that with me, the selectmen, I guess now, handle the certificate emerges. It doesn't come through the planning board. Is that correct for Plymouth? And they actually merged two lots together, and at that time they were merged. That's the opportunity for the boards. It's usually through a planning board that I deal with, but if selectmen is to show that, that could hurt their access status under that regulation, but those lots were merged, so now it's 107-acre lot, and you can see on that plan where they did a merger.
I believe you can petition to have those unmerged if they were involuntarily merged.
No. It wasn't involuntarily... It wasn't involuntary merge, they actually went through the.
Voluntary merger?
Yes, they went through the voluntary merger process.
All right, my misunderstanding?
Yes, no, that's correct, and you're, you're correct also that you can come in and ask for anything that was.
Voluntarily merged.
Correct, merged to be unmerged.
Right.
But this one was voluntarily merged.
Okay.
So, but I mean, that corrects another situation that had come down through. I wanted to grab the other one here.
Can I ask a question? I'm not sure if you just mentioned this or not, I was kinda going through something in my head as I was trying to understand a couple of things.
Is the, is the plan showing the right-of-way reserved also to the property that we're asking for the right of way?
So this is, this is one of your, one of your plans?
No, that's not my plan.
That was, that was the previously filed.
Oh, this is, this is the previously filed one that answers my question right now about the documentation of the existing right-of-way through someone's property and.
Well, which also it's documented on the other one, and I probably as well.
Okay.
Is that this one?
Yes. So it's documented on two reported plans, that one was recorded, this one was recorded in two thousand twenty-one, and then this one that is going through was done in two thousand twenty-three, two years later.
And these are recorded with the registry?
Absolutely, right up here is the.
Oh, got it.
Plan, plan numbers there.
Okay.
Plan numbers there, I highlighted it on that.
Okay, thank you.
And so they both are reported, and that's why I went over the certification by the land surveyor.
Yep.
I mean, each, each instance, they sit up as an existing way that is established and is a plan on record.
Okay.
The only problem we're running into, I believe in Joseph and I, we've had a great discussion on this, because it's running interference from both ends, and that, it still doesn't meet that statute for the building permit, and that, that's the purpose of that. Now, maybe this will be challenged in the future, there is, there is ongoing talk about amending that, but this is what we have to deal with at home.
Are we ready for a public hearing, or?
Okay.
So it is currently eight twenty-five, I'll open a public hearing. If any members of the public would like to speak, please come up to the podium and introduce yourselves before you speak.
Hello, everyone, my name is Eric. I'm the owner of the parcel two hundred, two thirty-six, which is the right-of-way cut across, like, that's my property. Right now I have several concerns. The first, the first one would be, when I purchased the lot, when I purchased the land, I was told, it wasn't official, but the previous owner did some research and, you know, went through some process, and he was told, or they were told, the current entrance, which the, which is the right-of-way, like, shared by the both of the lots, can only support, like, two houses, generally speaking, at, like, two new houses, and this condition, because of the traffic, the zoning, or the, the, the land condition, or whatever reason. So my concern would be if they, they build all the houses, that what am I gonna do with the land myself, since the, basically, it was, it's, the, the property, my property is a slope, so the land, the right-of-way cut diagonally across my land. At current condition, I think approximately it's, the, the, the road is, the, the road is about ten feet to fifteen feet wide, so even though the right-of-way says they have fifty feet wide of, you know, you, right to use to access their land, but it's, it's not that wide of road. So that's my first concern, like, can I build my, my own house in the future there, and also if they decided to give the, give, use the right-of-way to access their land through either foot or, by foot or vehicle? So does that include, you know, bigger construction? I, I know they may or may not gonna have a big construction and, right now, but what about in the future? You know, that's just my concern, trying to protect my own interest, and, yeah, and also, once the road is there, or something new, infrastructure, or, you know, construction established over there, like, who's responsible to maintain that road? Is it me, or is it them, or is it maybe, I don't know, the town, or just, it's a little bit too much of information, a bit too confusing to me.
Can I ask a question? So the road maintenance question, question was an interesting one. The, so your realtor told you something about how many properties and households this could support this road?
Approximately, I think he said with the condition, I see his condition, because it's almost on top of the, the Mayhew Turnpike, like, it's, it's just a little bit forward on the Mayhew Turnpike, which caused a little bit of blind spot, so let's say if the vehicle coming from the other side, they might have little reaction time, or something like that, where, and also the, there's a, no, no, culvert, go through the entrance of the private road, and also it's, it's just gravel, right, like, with the dirt and the, the condition, the width of the road. Basically, I think they were told right now, like, two houses, I'm not sure even three is possible, give or take, at this point. So let's say if they're gonna, you know, build two houses, which means whoever gonna be also using that road for entrance will not be able to, you know.
So I guess, I guess my, my question and comment is, question is, I found from what you're saying, it sounds like the realtor was making an assumption, I just wonder if there's any documentation there about that kind of limiting factor?
I think they might have, have it, but I'm not a hundred percent certain at this moment.
I mean, my other comment just before you go on.
I was just gonna have a question.
Is, what we're considering right now would put a condition to limit further development beyond what's proposed here.
Yeah.
Yeah, Phil?
My, my question was, can I ask what year you purchased your property?
Sorry?
Can I ask what year you purchased the property?
Last year.
Last year. So, so both of these are publicly, are documents that are, were publicly recorded, so this, this information should have been available to you at the time of your purchase. If, if it wasn't, that's, you know, I would say your, your realtor didn't do adequate deed research.
I'm sorry, you mean the information, I'm not sure what's information with it, like, the right-of-way or?
This plan and this plan are both recorded with the Mayor Met County Reg, sorry, Grafton County Registry of Deeds, which means they're publicly available, so you should.
But they purchased the land after I did.
But these, these were recorded.
Prior to.
Prior to that purchase, so this information was legally binding at the time you purchased your, your property.
Okay.
So this is no change.
I see.
And it indicates a fifty-foot right-of-way.
These two, Alan did not prepare those two there.
Yeah, right, no, these, this one is dated June two thousand twenty-three, and this one is dated October two thousand twenty-one.
Okay.
So, I mean, in terms of what your realtor told you, we can't speak to whether or not he was giving you all, your realtor was giving you all their information, but this, this information should have been discovered in, in any.
Right, I think I got, I have this to maps.
Okay.
Now, with regards to the restriction we were proposed, or was proposed, how did it read about two houses, proposed by the applicant?
The one I read earlier?
Yes, the one, yeah.
Uh, I don't remember, I think it's here.
You mind?
I'd read it again. Planning Board Note One.
Yeah.
On the proposed plan is, "Any future subdivision, commercial development subject to site plan review or development of more than two dwelling units on parcel two thirty seven oh one," which is the, the parcel that's served by this right-of-way road, "with access or road frontage on the substandard street plat road shall require the road to be improved to meet the road standards of the subdivision regulations as they exist at that time." So at this, what they're saying is, if they put more than two houses on there, they are required to bring that road up to current road standards, which would be what we spoke about earlier, which, which is a, you know, minimum with travelway, shoulders, ditches. So it is possible that if somebody, if somebody proposed a ten-unit subdivision on that hill and they proposed to improve that road, there would be an impact.
Okay.
And it would, it would come before this board and you would have the opportunity to provide input at that, at that time.
Okay.
Let me ask this question, if I can interject with this topic. So if they, they build two houses, the applicant will say builds two dwellings on their lot, this gentleman is still able to build a dwelling on his lot without bringing the road up to standard because it is a different lot, sir, even though that road still serves, correct? Because I'm just thinking down the road, if they had, the applicant built two dwellings, and then this gentleman goes to build a dwelling, and then the town says, hey, you need to bring this up to our road maintenance?
That's, that's a good question. What if, what if this gentleman would like to put two houses on, and that, that's now serving four, does that, how, how would you interpret that?
Yeah.
Plan, I would say, is, I believe the condition said, or the note does say, on two thirty-seven one.
On two thirty-seven.
The condition placed on an approval related to this property doesn't, I, I would interpret, doesn't necessarily carry over to the other property.
Yeah, I mean, my, my reading of this, that, you know, the, the fifty-foot right-of-way is, it has to be, I mean, I think technically you could, in, in agreement with the holder of the easement, you could agree to move the road, but it would take a, a joint agreement that you were going to say, hey, this road, which is here, grants access to the lot, we're going to grant access at another location and record that plan, but it would have to be in concert with that party.
And at which point we wouldn't be dealing with an existing.
Right.
So it would be a whole nother.
But I mean, that may never happen, but, you know, the, the, you know, when you purchased this, there was an encumbrance, an easement on that parcel, which, you know, legally has to be honored.
That can be done.
You, you can re, yeah, you could realign it if you chose.
Yeah, as long as they agree.
Yeah.
Does the?
I think Mike had a question earlier, yes?
So the host of the, of the right-of-way was asking about, as the road potentially could be further developed and become a town road, if they chose to have more than two lots, which is what was stated. If that happens, you then have a town road going through your property, which.
Well, it would be a, it would still be a private road until the point at which it's accepted by the town.
Right, if the town, if it became more than two lots, it would have to be brought up to town specs, and if the town accepted it as a private road, you've got a, you potentially could have a town road going through your property where you could access and have road frontage.
So there's potential, there's potential benefits for you as well.
Very big benefit for you if that happens.
Right.
Depending on his goals.
Depending what?
Depending on their goals.
Yeah, which we don't know that.
Hypothetically, since this road already, like, cut my, my, my lot into two pieces, if I, let's say, I'm able to subdivide it into, like, along with this road and just make it two pieces, that mean this road also qualifies to be, to, to make it a town road, even though they don't do the subdivision or something like this.
It's a street, this process of creating a street plat would make it, I mean, it would make it a private road.
But it would be a private road for the back lot, not necessarily his, so you would have to have a separate driveway.
I'll address those, yeah, okay.
Okay.
But that's, I just wanted, I don't want you to.
Yeah, okay, all right, and I don't know, that's why I was kinda.
And in a moment you can also address the question, which, I think, I think I know the answer to, but about the maintenance of this road, which was the, which was the question as well.
And another piece to one of the questions had to do with the sightlines out onto Mayhew Turnpike, that is a state road, so change of use, even if the, the access point to the state right-of-way is existing, a change of use may also require a driveway permit from DOT, so that is, that is a note.
But at this point, filing the street plat for the existing right-of-way is not a change of use?
A building permit might trigger that?
Mm-hmm, dwelling unit might.
Okay, or subdivision.
Subdivision, yeah.
Thank you.
I just have one more thing, that I wanna be, I wanna get it cleared off, just as Matt just mentioned, I'd say, they already built two houses, then I want to build, I'd say, maximum, I want to build another two, another two houses, then does that mean I don't have to change the condition of the road, or just I, that I'm responsible to change the condition? Like, I wasn't getting a clear answer to that one. I know, I may have to bring it to the board.
I mean, I, besides the technical answer that might exist here, there's also the question that, that would be a whole nother application that we're not dealing with at this point, and it's a hypothetical that.
Right.
We really probably shouldn't wade into right now.
Okay.
Yeah.
It is worth noting that the front parcel here has road frontage, so potentially subdividing that parcel is not wholly dependent on this right-of-way to give frontage, is that it does also have Mayhew Turnpike frontage.
Would not the creation of, or create, would not the filing of a street plat create frontage on that private road that would allow them to subdivide?
I would believe that it probably would, the board would have to review that at, you know.
And that's another, it's a separate issue than what we're looking at tonight.
Right, but I'm, what I'm saying, though, is that, you know, potentially this, this gentleman could create multiple parcels off of this because there's no frontage there, I think, I believe.
I really, I don't even wanna wade into that tonight because it really is, would be a separate application and not really before us tonight. Would you like to address any of the questions?
No, I'd be glad to.
Yeah, please.
That's Mike's.
I was gonna say, you're, you're welcome to ask more questions later if you.
If he's comfortable with me speaking.
May I know before he steps away? Also, if you do have further questions about the potential of what you could do with your lot, please feel free to reach out to Joseph, and he'd, I'm sure be more than happy to help you walk through potentials and possibilities. He's a great resource.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Awesome. Thank you, Eric.
All right, I'll try to remember all of them, but straighten me out when I don't cover all of them. I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump in with the access off of Mayhew Turnpike first, from the access point that exists now. It's historically there, but Joseph is correct, you can have a driveway permit and approved in a road there forever, but when you go to even build a house now, you have to go get a updated NHDOT driveway permit. When you stand on the road, the requirements are four hundred feet visibility in each direction, and it well, it well handles that distance, so there won't be any issue coming in and off of Mayhew Turnpike into that property. Also, the gray, it makes it easy too, because the gray tape is away from the road instead of towards the road. There's a slight dip as you go down into that hollow in, in there. Second is that this establishment of a private road, I agree, he can, he can use this. The right-of-way lines, you see the two fifty-foot right-of-way lines, is only establishing under the statue, private road frontage, so the back lot without any road frontage now would be able to get a building permit. Those two, two fifty-foot right-of-way lines you see on there, the only encumbrance on his property for those lines is that's where the abutter has the right to use. Technically, there is no right-of-way on his property under his title, because you cannot have a right-of-way over your own property, so that to him does not exist, but he cannot encumber that fifty feet for the abutter. He can utilize it, he can go over it, he can do, he can improve it beyond the fifty, he can make it better. The abutter doesn't have that opportunity. To answer that question too, that is pretty much maximized out for the ditch lines and what they've done for the logging operations, because in the past, the Erdot Frost that used to own this in the Bells, they knew, they knew each other and, and there was no issue, so they had done all kind of work in there and improved things, so it really isn't gonna expand. The gravel surface probably will be redone, as I had mentioned, and improved for the, for them to go in and out of there, and that certainly doesn't prevent that, prevent them from using that. Like Joseph mentioned too, this property has plenty of frontage, they can have the common access points and flare off and, and do a number of things on their property. One other thing I know is of concern of his that hasn't come up is. One other thing I know is of concern of his that hasn't come up is the interpretation if utilities can go on that right-of-way. I know I've had legal advice in these same situations that they can, but that doesn't but to do that, when this was created in 1977 as a confirmation, but it was prior to that, you'd actually have to run what they call a quiet title action, actually to take legal action to do that. So actually, there's no intent of putting any public utilities or electric service over that right-of-way. As you see on the lodge plan, that was sitting in front of you and actually sitting right there, the other two lots of Ning Yu and Tom Crossley owns two of the lots that are in the other development that goes up, you know, from the other side.
Off of Winterberry.
Winterberry. Correct. Winterberry Lane, I just wanted to point that out. The two lots they own and under the restrictive covenants within that subdivision, the two lots they own, they already have power up to their house, which is shown on that plan, and I've already met with New Hampshire Electric Co-op, and that's the direction they'll be bringing their utilities in. For one thing, it's a lot shorter, and if you get prices for utilities today, when you cut your distance in half, it cuts it down to 100,000 from 200,000, you know what I mean? It's a lot longer going in through the right-of-way, so that that is the way the utilities will come in, and they have the ability to do that from that direction. So I just wanted to alleviate that concern, because that was a big concern with the realtors before about if power could go in there or not. That was one of the reasons it didn't sell. And then Ning Yu and Tom Crossley came along and actually bought three parcels, so making sure they had utilities, because the ingress and egress by foot or by vehicle wasn't any question, as you see in there. So that 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 kind of answers that one, and I think I've covered, I think there's one I've missed. Could you refresh my memory if I miss?
Maintenance?
Maintenance. Maintenance, yes. There's actually an RSA statute passed, I don't know if Joseph knows it off the top of his head either, but today, you have to do a maintenance agreement when you're doing these subdivisions and have it recorded with it. The old ones, the old easements such as this in this age, it is covered under that statute, and actually, it's the person that puts it in and uses it first, such as my clients, they have to do the 100% maintenance on it. If they drive in and out of it, that's fine, but then if they put a house in, then they actually by law have to contribute to it without a maintenance agreement. That's the way the statute reads now. So but unfortunately, that's problematic, because there's nothing, it just states they have to, and they let the people fight over it. So unfortunately, that's the way the statute's written. Before, it was just you had to fight anyways. So, excuse me, but that's that's how that RSA reads. I mean, we can provide that, or Joseph can put it on his list to look it up for the board to put it in a packet to you, in his interpretation. It would probably come better from him, or I can provide it. So maintenance is an issue, but if they're using it, if they build their home up there for one home, even the two homes, and this gentleman is not utilizing the road except for driving in access in his property, cutting firewood and stuff, there is no really reason for him to, he's not going to be responsible for their driveway when they put it in, period.
Thank you.
If that's using it for development of his for any reason, then yes, that is going to kick in, but not for like firewood access or even if he had a tree farm and that and stuff unless you cause, you're always liable for causing damage to somebody else's use even though it's over your property. So it's no different than a class six road. Yes, the public has a right to travel over it, but if you cause or any of this damage to it, the town can still go after them for that reason. But I hope that answers.
Thank you, yes. Are there any other public comments or questions? No? Okay. Anybody on Zoom? No?
All right, I'm gonna go back on what I said. Based on the little, I mean, we did have public input from both both owner, you know, the owner of the parcel that's encumbered and the applicant, I'm going to move that we approve the application.
Okay.
Do we need findings of fact?
We do need findings of fact. I'll put, I'm gonna say at 48, I want to close the public hearing, and we should do findings of fact, or if other board members have more questions, we can also entertain those, but I'd be happy to hear some findings of fact.
Finding of fact is that he is not proposing to put utilities over the road following the letter of the of the agreement when it was initially put in for vehicle or footpath.
I would I would offer the finding of fact that Planning Board Note 1 indicates that any development other than in excess of two homes on the lot, map 237 Lot 1 will require a new application and a revision to the plan.
I'll offer that this right-of-way has been previously recorded with the state in two instances prior to this application.
County, please.
Oh, county, sorry.
Crafton County.
Thank you. You're right, thank you. Long meeting.
And we're only halfway. Are you willing to entertain a motion at this point?
The applicant does not propose to update this road and is not seeking to have this taken over as a public road, or, yeah. Yeah, I'd be willing to.
I will, I move that we approve the street plat application as submitted.
Second.
Do we need any any conditions?
I think we do.
I think we have all them included at this point, right? Yeah, okay. So we have a motion. Did I hear a second?
Neil.
Neil, okay. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, the application is approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The ones you need to sign, the recorded plan is going to, the total is not going to be on.
And of course, you bring the recorded Mylar to.
Mylar's here tonight.
At the end of the night, all right.
It's all busy. It costs me one Mylar, if it didn't go to my case, I'd break back, cost me one gas and one Mylar. And also, you know, I'm using all of them. There's five here with this.
Right.
There's five without, so you can sign what you need to address that. And also, this is recommended, and I don't know what you're doing, this is signed for the planning boards, it needs to be reviewed.
Blue? Is that right?
Oh, yeah. I had two plans rejected, because my Mylar I use is so absorbent, they claim I put them on, they were muted. So when I went in Bridgewater, I took a picture, I had a picture to sign here, because I had to do mine in black by law, and but they request the planning board to do them before.
So you have blue handy, Joseph?
They don't think you have a blue ink in your printer?
We can find one.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
They've never kicked it back with the sort of Sharpie pen for the Mylar, so.
Joseph, you got a page, you can see this one, this is a perfect one.
That is perfect, huh? One of these guys.
Those are the networks on my Mylar, perfect.
You own stock in this company?
I did, but I didn't try it.
Yep.
I could all that.
All right.
I'm just standing for a moment.
No problem.
Hey, John?
Yes, Mark.
Sorry to do this, before you move forward to the next, I think we still have two applications left.
There are.
I have about a two, two and a half hour drive home from Maine that I'm trying to accomplish this evening, and I know Molly is sitting as an alternate right now.
She is.
Is there a way I can exit and she can vote for me on these next two, or do you need me to stay?
I think that would be acceptable, yeah.
Okay.
Safe travels, Mark.
Thank you, Mark. Mark has been excused, and Molly, you may be a voting member for the rest of the evening.
Welcome, Molly.
Thank you. Very exciting.
Excellent.
Don't tell me you don't have a paper copy of these words.
I think we'll.
Neil, just again, what'd you sleep tonight?
I'm just taking it all in.
I've got elbows if he does.
All right.
Been a long day already. Started at 5:00 in the morning.
Seeing you, Alan.
It's down on high haze all day today. Give it a go down there in the jungle.
High haze in Center Harbor?
Yeah.
Oh, no.
All right.
If I just anything.
So.
Sounds good.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
It was nice, you had a little battery start.
Wait till you see four and five.
I don't know.
You can stay. So letter D here, or four. Site plan review application, retail greenhouse and landscape sales, Hamilton Way. Application from Three Lakes Properties to establish and expand a retail landscape material sales and retail greenhouse space on parcels 213012000, 213012001, 002003, located on both sides of Hamilton Way.
Hamilton Way, a town road.
The applicant would like to come up and introduce yourself and say a few words?
Yes. Good evening. Last thing, here's a display for the, where a rack to put them on. Anyways, my name's Colby Lenatine. I do own all of Three Lakes' entities that we got going on. I've been before you guys before with this project a couple of times, looking to make a few adjustments or improve upon our projects. I've been here for the original building and lots zero and one that were approved prior and was really looking to make adjustments or change in use on lots two and three. Kind of what we're here for. I guess you guys need to start this meeting earlier, go forward, past my bedtime.
I do appreciate the nice narrative you provided in your application.
Oh, yes, yeah. We modified it from the last time, so, you know. Anyway, so really changing use on parcels 12.2, 12.3. We are looking to move the salt shed that we did have on one of our parcels, which would be erecting a 30 by 60 structure on the back. We're looking to do a clear span structure between two shipping containers. We did give some photos, sorry, it didn't really, white doesn't really print out well on white, but I think most people know and understand what that is. Also a greenhouse, tried to bring in a master plan designed to this go around, and then I was looking to add some lighting fixtures along the road, just for more security reasons. We have a lot of materials out in the yard and whatnot. So those are the things that I'm kind of after. I'm not sure how the best way to proceed here or what goes on next.
Okay, well, first, we'll see if your application looks complete and then.
Sure.
Thank you for the introduction?
Yes.
So as far as completion goes, so you are proposing a decent amount of new impervious surface, and is there a drainage plan or?
So when we bought the, when we bought the development, everything was already engineered as far as drainage site plant, I mean, it's all in there, I believe it was one of the attachments as well. There, we kind of are in a unique situation, because I was trying to merge a couple of parcels, so, you know, that square footage calculation works, worked, you know, I mean, it's, I don't know, I don't know how that best works. Haven't gone down this path much myself, don't have a lot of experience with it, but yeah, the greenhouse was laying out between lots two, oh, sorry, three and four, which hit the calculations, hits the calculations, I guess, provided, not, I wasn't aware of all of that, obviously, I spent time with Joseph, these weren't conversations that entirely came up, but I did receive the email two days ago.
Okay.
So that's where I currently sit.
Actually, I have a question. You mentioned potentially merging some of these lots or?
Yeah.
And so it does, does the green, the greenhouse does still currently span two lots?
It does, or planning to. That was like really the main reason.
And you own both lots?
I have, through three different real estate transactions, have acquired all five parcels.
So does that require an easement, even though it's the same owner? It does, I believe, yes.
The mergers have been executed and filed.
Oh, they, okay.
They have been filed with the registry of deeds, so they have not reflected on the tax maps, because they happened within the past few weeks, but they have.
Legally, this is all, is this all one parcel now?
Uh, it's two. So each side of the road is one part. Well, correct. With the building, it's three, but now the two and two on either side of the road are together.
So the building on the front lot is one lot, and then three and four are merged?
Correct.
Okay.
And then zero and one were merged as well.
So no need for easements or anything then, or, okay.
Actually, is parcel three and two on the west side of the road, right? Not three and four?
Here shows three and four.
Oh, really? Here's two.
The tax map is different than the subdivision.
Correct, yes, the subdivision.
You can throw lot numbers on top of that and really mess it up even more.
Yeah, I tried to, I tried to number on the very back of the staff report, I tried to give a a map that clarifies how I'm using the lot, the parcel numbers in my staff report, and so for purposes of the staff report, I've referred to them by the tax map number, which is not the same as the lot number in the subdivision plan. So the two on the east side of the road are zero and one, which have been merged, and then two and three on the west side of the road have also been merged.
Okay, thank you for the clarification, but it stands that they're merged in the greenhouse will not actually be spanning across two lots.
Correct.
Thank you.
The main purpose for merging them was the greenhouse, but I also wanted the proximity closer to our our building, where all transactions happen.
So to go back to the, like, so the runoff issue and drainage, so I guess in your in your transactions with Joseph, I mean, so whatever was there previously, previous conditions would be now be changed, so we probably need a new drainage study on that and potentially mitigation, depending on how everything works out, I would imagine. So it'd be good to have that information, whether that does or does not hold up an acceptance, I think we could talk about. Are there any waivers requested?
I'm not aware, I guess probably maybe the biggest issue would be on the master plan side, which seems a little subjective or kind of hard.
That one is a bit more subjective.
I'm not aware of any specific waivers I'd need. I mean, it's all changes on the whim here.
There were a few checklist items that I that I think may be worth considering.
The plan seems like it's, might be missing a few pieces.
Yeah.
Which sometimes we waive for smaller projects, but this is potentially not a smaller project?
I don't, I mean, I'll let Joseph bring them up and then we can debate them or have input on it. I, you know, some of this, I guess I was wasn't aware of or brought up to in the time that I've spent with Joseph. I'm sorry, I'm not a big developer and know everything inside and out, nor endless pockets to pay for it all.
And it's not meant as a criticism, just like.
No, I understand. I understand. So I mean, I'll let you guys bring up the line items and we can just address it as we go forward.
You need to have a wetlands delineation. You got to map your wetlands.
Is that?
You're a part of the drainage. Well, I would think the drainage would be part of that.
Everything on, I mean, this was the approved drawing for drainage and runoff for the subdivision of 2009. With settling ponds and such that were installed prior to us buying.
I was on the planning board.
With the calculations of the square footage of impervious surfaces and stuff and the square foot requirements, it really wasn't, I don't believe, an issue until the lots are merging.
So I was on the planning board at the time when, were you on it too?
Yeah.
So we were both, it was, went through, I don't know how many meetings.
Dennis Prescott.
Dennis.
Yes.
And I think it went through three, at least three meetings before they got their approval because there were so many lots. And I, I'm not sure that another, a duplicate process of wetlands when it was already done.
I guess the issue here is we're changing the conditions of the site, which can have an impact on what's there.
True.
Runoff and all that.
Yeah, I mean, our, as Joseph noted, you know, if five thousand square feet of impervious surface are added, you know, that would trigger a requirement for a drainage plan. And either, I believe the retail greenhouse is six thousand square feet, which would certainly be impervious.
Well, you see, that's where merging the lots kind of, the merging of the lots happened a week or two ago when we filled out paperwork.
Yep.
So that kind of threw a regular, because the square footage of everything happened.
Right.
On another note, to the size of the greenhouse, it's realistically probably not the size I'm gonna afford or buy or even install. I figured it was easier to ask for something bigger than to work it, you know, say four thousand, but I wanted six thousand. I figured it was either be at a higher number and then land on something smaller. Realistically, a greenhouse of sixty foot wide is a relatively tough structure for, you know, one, cost, two, just the size of it's not... They're not as common, especially for what I'm really after. Some of these things, and that's been some of my delay in getting here is truthfully, like, it's been a while to understand the vision and/or how to build out the project, the needs that I really need or want and then can afford. So realistically, a sixty by a hundred green, a hundred foot greenhouse is realistically probably not gonna happen. It's probably gonna be more like forty by eighty, so I might have stepped in...
Nine acres.
By saying sixty by a hundred.
I mean, I guess as a board, we have to look at what you've given us.
Understandable.
And if you want to give us a revised plan, things might change. But at this point, you've, you've provided this and it's kind of hard just to say, well, like, you say you're not gonna do it and maybe you won't, but you know...
Well, I mean, I guess it was trying to present the idea, I mean, and it was kind of leading up to... It doesn't matter. Anyhow, that's fine. Understandable.
I'm generally supportive of this. You know, I think, I think this is gonna be... I'm excited for the opportunities it will give you. I think the town will support this level of business.
I agree. I mean, I don't mean to sound critical, just kind of, get our kind of...
But at the same time, I do, I do think it's, it seems like with the cumulative development that it's gonna be hard to not trigger the, the requirements for stormwater analysis.
Yes, you have to have a SWIP. You've got to have a stormwater pollution prevention plan because you meet, you meet the requirements for that.
It would seem that way.
Because of the size of the project.
You, also, you have an extensive wetlands jurisdictional area that hasn't been looked at in fifteen years. So you really need to have a current, you know, you need to have it mapped out.
I mean, also notable is even if the greenhouse gets smaller, there's still other new impervious surface, as I understand it, that would probably bump us into that territory.
The structure over the, the shipping containers technically is impervious, you know, like, the cumulative impact of all those things, like, probably should have, we would require that for any development of this.
No, understandable. I guess, I mean, I'm not great at this type of stuff. I mean, where do you go to get this guidance prior to getting this meeting? The most I know is to reach out to Joseph. These things didn't really evolve in conversation. I mean, I understand you got, you know, online documents, but I mean, some of that's like reading great for me. I pick rocks up and I put them down.
And that's, and that's fine. I mean, part, part of our goal here is to help you through this process as well.
Sure.
I mean, yes, we're kind of checking off boxes and maybe it could sound, sound kind of critical, but our goal is also to help you through the process.
Sure.
And, and meet those benchmarks that we have set. Mike, did you want to say something?
So initially, this was set up for many buildings and many parking lots. And you've done an incredible job developing this piece of property. I'm wondering since, since the drainage report is already existing, if we can't just have our town engineer look at what was already done in two thousand and nine to kind of give, if we do give some type of conditional approval today, that conditional upon the town engineer saying, yeah, that's staying away from the wetlands that were identified in two thousand and nine for when they got the approval, or whether he recommends a different spot, working with the applicant and Joseph. I hate to hold it up for another meeting.
I mean, here's the thing, if we offer that conditional approval and say, well, maybe we'll move things around and then we're putting that on staff to make an administrative decision as to whether that's okay or not.
It is a movable object, a span of a green.
It's also a site plan.
This is completely different than what Dennis Prescott had. He really needs to have a SWIP and he needs to have a professionally mapped wetland boundary.
If I recall correctly, we did add a definition to our zoning that required, you know, that storage trailers be treated not as temporary structures, but as, as, you know, onsite, to be shown on site plans. Like, I think that was... What's that?
Like shipping containers.
Yeah, or even tractor trailer containers, yeah. I, I think, you know, when we, when we changed our zoning, that was an issue. There have been compliance issues with that in the past, and I think that one of the zoning changes we did a couple of years ago was meant so that, you know, it's not, it's not an issue to have shipping containers as a structure on your site plan, but if you're gonna have them there, show them on the site plan and if you're proposing to move them.
We did. I mean, I did. And I get that they're unsightly and that's why I've anchored them on the back parcel where, you know, general traffic isn't seen at all.
I mean, it seems like a perfectly appropriate thing to do on, on the type of site that you're proposing with landscaping materials. It's, it's dry storage.
Well, I'm really, the ultimate goal is to store firewood.
And if we're looking like, it's a woodshed with arched roof, so it's a forty by sixty...
Yeah. It's big.
Structure, plus the greenhouse, I mean...
There's a lot of...
They were on different parcels that, you know, like, after getting the email the other day, I was looking at the square footages, which I might have been in the realm of, but the merging of the lots or soon to be happening, kind of negate some of that at this point.
The other thing I recall is I, I seem to remember that when we issued your approval for the first one for the building on that lot, I seem to remember that we said that if you were gonna have any future updates to the plan, that we wanted to see better details on like lighting and things like that. So like, if you're gonna have post lights, I think we need a detail on what the light looks like and where they're gonna be, which is not a big deal.
There are some light details.
We did start, we referenced them on...
Great. Sorry.
On the other one.
I might be forgetting an intermittent one that you filed too.
And, yeah, I mean, we haven't really proceeded. Once again, that's why I'm kind of rolling this all up into one.
Yep.
But I mean, my idea is to, I'm trying to do old, you know, I mean, my old light, the light posts I've acquired are from nineteen twelve from the Seaport with old fixtures and everything, so trying to do that old sort of feel. But I mean, I understand, I guess I, I mean, understand, I guess I got an uphill battle here tonight, but I guess I need to understand my checklist of what I need to address.
And when you say uphill battle, I mean, we are probably gonna ask for some things that you don't have at this point, but I think I hear a lot of support for what you want to do and I think we want to work with you to try to make this happen.
Sure.
But we might ask for a few more things to make it happen.
Sure, understandable.
Can I just ask, the bins, and this might be the previous ones as well, who's looking at this, that are already in place. Are they outside the setback?
I believe so.
Okay.
They're also, I mean, wouldn't they be also be a portable structure? They're not fixed.
I think there's still nothing between the setback if I understand correctly. I just wanted to make sure that, and they said you're close to the line. I just...
Yeah.
So I guess the question before us is, do we want to go forward and accept without the drainage or SWIP or a waiver for that? Or do we want to hold off an acceptance for now and...
I think we're gonna run up against timelines if we accept now.
Okay.
Even with a conditional.
I guess, speaking out loud, I mean, I have no idea what kind of cost that is ahead of me and/or, you know, timeframe to even handle that. So this might drag on for a while. I mean, if it's a fifty thousand dollar venture, I'm S.O.L.
I don't think so.
Because he'll be, if we accept it, he'll be bound, but then bound the clock starts.
Yes.
Yeah, the acceptance triggers a sixty-five day decision period, which...
I mean, there's no way in this contracting world that any of that's gonna be hit.
I'd, I'd rather not accept it just to give you the time you need to figure that out, not feel pressured.
I would, I don't know if Joseph emails me like the require, or my punch lists or A B C of what I need to check off to be compliant. But once again, I mean, some of this might be cost prohibitive because I'm not Market Basket or anything else out there.
I was gonna say, I know we have, we've had multiple applications over the past months where, you know, we've had a stormwater pollution prevention plan or drainage report that came in. You know, there, there are several engineers who presented to us, like, all you have to do is go through the minutes of summer meetings or watch some videos to get some names of people.
Oh, I mean, I work with them all the time with my shoreline work stuff and whatnot.
Yeah, it sounds like you've got good, good connections already.
That's fine. I just haven't really explored the actual cost per se regarding to my own venture here.
And we get that that's a hardship, and at the same time, it's our duty as a board to protect the town and our resources and not unreasonably for a developer, but still trying to cover all the bases.
Sure. So, I mean, I understand the, is there any other issues that I need to address before re-presenting? And when I do come back, do I have to go through all this paperwork again and pay the fees and all that fun stuff?
I believe we can just, if it comes to that, I mean, we don't have any motions at this point. We can not accept it as complete until we have more information. That's correct, right, Joseph?
That means I'm tabled.
This is still a pending, this is still a pending application. We haven't denied it.
Yeah.
So you're, you're still good under your fees.
Okay.
Well...
Does that expire as of the new year?
Yeah, if an application is not accepted...
We can continue it though, can't we?
Well, if you, you can continue it only once it's been accepted, really.
Oh, interesting.
It's not, you know, when you decline to accept it, it does typically have to be re-filled as a new application. As with the, the Gettin Road property, I mean, if the fees are a hardship, the select board, you can always ask them to waive those filing a new application. I mean, I can't speak on behalf of them, but they're the entity with the authority over, you know, over that area.
If he withdrew his application, he doesn't get a refund.
Correct.
I mean, last time I did this, the fees were a couple hundred bucks. Now I'm fifteen, eighteen hundred bucks into it. I'd say it's the end of the world. I'm not gonna cry poverty up here, but, you know, all these things do start to add up.
So I think we can continue the application hearing, can't we?
Might have to continue it longer than sixty-five days, though.
Which we have the ability to go longer than sixty-five.
We do.
I mean, these types of studies take a while. I mean, even just getting in line with anyone out there is, you know, I don't know what their timeframe is gonna be.
We've continued some quarter, like Mountain View Charter School.
But those, those are ones that are accepted, though.
Oh, that was, that's right, that's right.
This is, this is the acceptance question.
D E S has a list of licensed wetland scientists and stormwater specialists.
Yeah, I'm not sure that that's necessarily my issue. My issue is the timeframe to reach out to someone, get them in the queue, get them on site, then how long is it gonna take to do the renderings and the surveying? You know, I mean, none of that stuff happens overnight.
I mean, they, they could probably start with the work that was done previously, you know, if this was, if there was a subdivision.
Sure, but I mean, we're also putting a time constraint on getting, I mean, my project that I'm involved with take two years and start, you know, it's really hard for anyone else to get involved with a larger project today to be done in sixty days. It's my biggest general concern out there. Haven't reached out to anyone, but I would imagine it's gonna take longer than sixty-five days. I don't know, if you can keep continuing it, that's fine, but it sounded like there was a time constraint there.
The other thing you could go, you could do is, you know, if this was a subdivision in two thousand and nine and there was a, a plan filed, if, if that engineer that filed that plan at the time is still in business, they'd probably have all the information on the site and...
Sure. I mean, we were able to pull the records and stuff. I mean, I have the actual approved drawing right there.
Okay, yeah.
But everyone, we keep coming back to, you know, the change in use on lots.
Slightly, slightly different, but they, they start with more information, right?
I mean, I understand. I get that, but...
And, and, you know, I'm sure the laws, they have to, the standards they, they write the plan to have probably changed over the past fifteen years as well.
So aside from that, what other issues do I have to address?
I think we're gonna have to rely on Joseph here.
There was one on parking, but I mean, whole properties, parking.
Yeah, that was a, that was a note that I had. So a six thousand square foot greenhouse is proposed, a retail greenhouse. And for the parking standards and zoning ordinance for retail space, it requires one space per two hundred and fifty square feet of gross floor area. So if the, if you need to go below that...
For retail gross floor area?
For retail, that's correct.
So, I mean, once again, this is where like having separate lots kind of works against me because I have several parking spots.
I don't know that you're, are you adding any floor, retail floor area in this proposal?
It was a retail green...
Greenhouse.
My interpretation was that the greenhouse is a retail shop.
Well, but it was also for storage.
Or is it, or is it production?
A lot of it's for storage and retail. I mean, there is some retail space in the front, but, you know, for instance, I mean, I'm gonna be storing straw bales. I can't keep that outside. It gets damaged, but I can't jam it in my building. So I also thought by putting up a greenhouse, it's kind of a cheap cost, kind of gives a feel of the property, allows me dry storage space, which is, you know, kind of behind the scenes. So it's kind of a multi-use thing. I'm not looking to propagate plant material in it. I mean, the front third is probably gonna be putting out annuals and mums and pumpkins in the fall.
It's not like we're, we're looking at foundations and permanent buildings that are gonna be there for a hundred or so years. You couldn't ask for a better use for that property and it's needed in the community right now. And he's providing a service that has had all these studies done. I still think that it could be accepted tonight and let the town engineer give us a report on what, what he thinks is really necessary, and then Colby can look at the town engineer's report to decide, yep, I'll, this sounds reasonable, let's go ahead. And I tend to give it a...
This isn't the same site that we had in two thousand and nine.
I think it's gonna be a lot less impact. And with what Colby's doing, he's in the, he's in the business of stopping erosion and, and he's, if you walk the site, it's amazing what he's done and, and provides to the community. I think if there's any way that the town engineer finds a way that it's not necessary to jump through all the hoops, then we owe it to work with him.
From what I can see, it does not appear that the application is complete because of the drainage. But I'm also very new at this and I'm really, really sympathetic to the cost. And I'm wondering if, like you were saying, Phil, there is a way to...
Continue to consider the application.
Continue it, yeah, so that you can have the time to, to contact potential engineers to see what their timelines actually are. Because you might be surprised, you know. You might not be.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I, yeah, I imagine, you know, this day and age with how everyone's busy and right out straight and...
Still worth asking, I think.
I have no issues asking. I mean, I got a few people I can call, like, but anyways, it's whatever, whatever we need to do.
That's, that's as a clarification. I know we're low on time. Just as a clarification, I know we're low on time for Molly.
Thank you.
We do have the ability to waive the requirements of our site plan and subdivision regulations, although it's best not to do it too often because they're there for a reason, and it sets precedent for other applicants.
Yeah.
And in this case, it really is an important issue with the drainage and...
I mean, there's no direct runoff in, on the site into Melbrook or any wetlands that are obvious. I understand the state or state overlay, but that is not even remotely right, I mean, half of my building was in the floodplain, which sits four or five feet higher than the elevation of Tenny Mountain Highway, so there was another $2,500, you know, I mean, it just keeps ratcheting out. I mean, there's very minimal to no wetland species on the property, so, you know, I understand all those things, went to school for some of it, I mean, it's ultimately gonna be a gravel parking lot anyways, so it's gonna be hard to control a lot of that just because of what happens, and anytime you pave it, you're just gonna be speeding up the water anyways, nor do I want it to be pavement. I mean, the intent is to have wood chips on most of the parking lot to have plant material sitting there, which will also control water movement, sediment issues, erosion issues, some of it just need time and money to implement.
I feel it's, I'm in favor of your project, but it's imperative that we have a stormwater pollution prevention plan and that we have this jurisdictional wetland defined.
Sounds good.
It needs to be done by a professional.
Okay, I understand. I'm not sure the timeframe or dollars required for that at this moment, so I don't know how fast I'll be able to move.
Do you wanna continue it for a month and, and see what information you have for us?
When you guys meet next, I'm gonna be traveling in September.
Can we...
So the board typically continues once it's accepted an application?
So this is where I fall with this whole project, every time, I always am in the land of gray, not so much straightforward, this is my entire life.
I'm gonna say we take liberty, take the, make an executive decision to continue the application hearing.
Despite it not...
It's your discretion, Mr. Chair.
Well, I mean, my discretion is only to listen to motions and have a vote on them.
Is that a motion, Phil?
So, yeah, I would move that we continue this as an application hearing until our October, do you need a date?
Let's take a look at a date.
You're gonna be traveling in late September?
Uh, yeah, I'm gonna be going to Ecuador with my family.
The second, the second Thursday in October is the 17th, can you, are you okay with continuing to October 17th, and that'll give you two months to look into this?
Most likely, yeah, I mean, I just don't know, I mean, I'll probably be able to present some information, I just don't know.
Doesn't have to be you, if you've got an engineer at that point, they can present for you.
Yeah, but, I mean, I'm also, like, you know, piling all this on, I'm doing drawings, survey, blah, 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 blah.
It won't be snowing, it won't be snowing yet.
Never know, October 31st, we had a massive snowstorm a while back.
So, yeah, I'm gonna propose...
Could I just bring up another idea? I mean, if I reduce the size of the greenhouse and some of those types of things, am I starting to be more compliant that this isn't an issue?
I think you're gonna be pretty, it's gonna be hard to be compliant.
I think...
Well, then I'll wipe out the merging of the lots, and now it's two separate lots.
Technically, I think it's the cumulative impact, and I think anything, honestly, gravel parking is technically impervious as well.
Oh, I completely understand, yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, I think the sum of impervious surface alone is enough to require that plan, or at least the analysis.
Well, the flat area before I subdivided probably wouldn't have hit that 20,000-square-foot issue. It's the truth of the matter, and then I subdivided because of the, or, no, I merged the lots because of the greenhouse because I needed to hit the setback.
But you've got the woodshed storage, which is impervious, you've got the greenhouse, which is...
That's our one lot, this, like, a greenhouse goes to the other lot.
And there is a cumulative impact, and this is the...
It's in a visible line that it's...
And this is the site plan, not separate site plans.
Oh, yeah, that's, this town deals with that separately, and I'm used to it a lot.
And I agree with the, I know you haven't gotten a second yet, I don't think, I agree with the spirit of what you're proposing, I'm not certain it follows our RSAs and all that.
As long as we're noticing the, the noticed parties, the abutters, that we're going to continue this for a future time, I think we're okay. I think it's, I think having him reapply is...
No, I, I understand what you're saying, I agree with the spirit of it.
Can we, can we get some guidance from our town engineer, see what, have him...
So, I mean, it would be at his cost, that's the whole thing, like, I'd rather have him contract with his engineer first rather than pay our engineer to do the same thing.
Yeah, well, we have a motion.
He's got more control over that.
We have a motion on the floor.
Yeah, the motion is continue to October, our October hearing, which would be the 17th.
Second.
And what happens if I don't come with enough suitable information?
Provide us an update and request an extension.
So we're just gonna, we'll just do this every month until that engineer's drawings are done?
We can't guarantee that.
Conceptually, yes.
We will do our best on that.
We'll try to work with you.
If, I'm, it's, the 65 days isn't necessarily bothering me, it's the contract, everyone else can't speak for it.
Well, we haven't, when we accept it, that's when we're bound to that 65-day exception, so, like, we're trying to give you time to get a complete application to us.
Sure.
So once we accept it, that's when that 65-day timeframe, we have to decide.
So this is the continuance before accepting?
Yes.
Yeah, so the time has, 65-day clock hasn't started yet, so what we're trying to...
So, I guess, so I know that aspect, what other holes do I have to address?
Make sure you're following all the setbacks, I mean, you said you are, so if that's the case.
I don't see anything that's not in Joseph's report, and you've got that.
Parking was one thing, I know.
Parking, it's also in the report.
And you might potentially, if you're not using, that's a sizable greenhouse, if you're not using it all for retail space, you know, if two-thirds are for your storage and, you know, back of the house, that might significantly adjust your square foot, or your parking requirements.
That sounds like it's gonna adjust seasonally as well. Well, it might, yeah.
But, I mean, you're not gonna be short on space for parking, and you don't have to line it, you just have to show us that you have capacity for that amount of parking.
Okay, so we've got a motion.
Uh, could we pick apart, is the master plan signed fine?
Yeah, I wouldn't worry about that part.
Okay, I just don't wanna have to keep doing this every, I, all right, I don't know the inner workings like everyone else do well, so...
One suggestion, if you do come back in October 17th, and let's presume everything's not nailed down, so you're coming back with updates at that time, it always does help the board in our determination of a continuation or not a continuation, if you have more sustainable, or not sustainable, dates where it's, I don't know when this is happening, or I don't know when that's happening, or I don't know, if you can say, I've talked to this person and I'm two months out for expect, you know, with some more concrete dates or ideas, it's helps us make a decision at that point.
Okay, sounds good, appreciate it. Do I have issues with my master plan sign, can I leave that alone?
I wouldn't worry with the master plan.
Sign, the sign?
Oh, the master, oh, the sign, master plan, oh, the signed master plan, oh, that.
We have a motion.
We do have a motion.
We're debating...
Yeah.
Conditions of the motion.
I just wanted to be sure.
Do we need a soil survey?
I think we can deal with...
Well, that would be part of a wetlands and SWIP.
Okay, yeah.
I think the sign, the mass, the signed master plan, we may have issues with it when we get to an actual, considering the application, but it should not affect the application being complete.
Okay, so, but then that's gonna lead to another meeting afterwards, and I could dial it in now and have it ready for the next meeting?
I would say make, like, review, are you...
Oh, I've been...
By having a signed master plan, he can bypass some of our sign regulations.
Okay.
That's where the land of gray happens again.
Is there a reason you're doing the master plan and not just following our regulations?
One more, on the sign?
Yeah.
Uh, I mean, there was the freestanding sign structure in 801 or whatever under mass, uh, just freestanding signs, but there's no, like, master plan sign regulations, there's all the other, like, categories, and then that's where I think you can ask for a waiver for certain requirements to the signage section of the zoning ordinance as it relates to a freestanding sign, so land of gray again.
That's a waiver request.
Regarding to the sign and what I was asking for, right? I'm not trying to be difficult, I was just trying to dial it in so we don't, so that we get it correct, because I'm not a big lawyer or engineer or anything above.
We've been through a lot tonight, I'm trying to make sure we're paying due diligence here for requests, I'm sorry.
So you'd remove the existing sign and move it to the new location?
Last time I was here, we moved it from the, the building side, so Lot 5, 12-5, to 12-0, because I didn't want that sign in front of the building with the retail stuff that's happening in front of it, so last time, we had moved the sign easement, development easement to parcel 0, 12-0, today I was asking actually to put it in the middle of 12-0, so, yeah, yet again, I've moved it over like 100 feet.
I think we can deal with that as part of the hearing process when we get there.
Yeah, I mean, we have enough to, to consider that, I mean, it's not like we're missing information on that.
I just didn't know if you were looking for more information or adjustments, I guess, but that's fine.
So if we can reiterate, the motion is to basically delay our acceptance or...
I would say to continue our consideration of acceptance.
Of the application until there's more, until the application is more complete, which includes a wetland mediation plan, drainage?
A wetland jurisdictional wetland determination.
Jurisdictional wetland determination?
Right, that would be mapping the wetland boundaries.
But that's, that would be part of the drainage.
A drainage plan.
SWIP, you know, would probably, you know, have the same guy do it as the SWIP.
I mean, so according to the rules, if, again, I'm the beginner here, so, this application is not technically complete, so if we were to play really strictly by the rules, we would need to deny this application because it's not complete.
Not deny it, but...
Sorry, not deny it.
Not accept it as complete.
Not accept it as complete.
Continue.
We could say we're running low on time and buy a little...
I guess going forward, because, I mean, I have a lot of other ideas going forward with not just this project, but other things, and like, where are you really supposed to get the guidance or ask questions? I mean, I, I met in the office a few times and this kinda stuff didn't come about.
I did advise that the plan, as you showed me the concept, would need to have the wetland or the stormwater requirements waived to be presented, so I, you know...
So you're saying that, I guess, you're saying that I should have written a note to ask for the waiver, is that how that works?
Well, that's what, that's the, that's in the board's...
It sounds like the consensus of the board right now is that several of us probably would not grant a waiver.
Correct.
So, I mean, it's just like, I'm stuck in a man of, like, you know, just looking for guidance, I guess, and not, I'm not trying to, like, cut the corners, I just, I'm trying to understand the process a little bit more.
We want a stormwater plan. We want a stormwater plan.
You know, I mean, this wasn't, the time that it was spent, none of this conversation came about.
In the site, it's in the site plan review regulations, which are publicly available, correct?
Sounds good, thank you.
So, do we have, we have a motion, we haven't had a second?
No, Neil seconded.
Oh, Neil seconded?
Neil did second.
Okay, I keep missing Neil's second tonight. Any further discussion? No, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstained.
Abstained.
Thank you, have a good evening.
You too.
Thank you, you too.
Thank you.
See you, Colby.
We do appreciate your time.
October 17th.
Okay.
Boundary line adjustment.
Boundary line adjustment, indeed.
No net area change.
Thank you for all staying with us.
We're almost done.
Like past everyone's bedtime.
We saved the... You're just here because you're, this is your entertainment for the evening.
It's getting late, no chatting, okay. Boundary line adjustment application, 17 to 19 Point of View Drive, application from Powers and Marion to adjust a common boundary line between parcels 220, 03206 and 220, 03207. Proposal is for an even area swap with no net change in area for either parcel. Good evening.
Hi, it's been an interesting evening. This should really be quick, you should have had the paperwork that shows where the line adjustment's gonna be. On the east side of the property, we're moving the line over approximately 10 feet to the north, and on the west side of the property, it's moving a little bit over toward the south, and the, both properties are going to stay exactly the same size, so there's no change in the actual properties. We're just trying to straighten it out a little bit in the front so that the line is more normal-looking, let's just say that.
Are you Christine?
I'm sorry?
Are you Chris, oh, you're Christine?
Yeah.
Okay, I was just trying to get...
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't introduce myself.
You're Mrs. Power?
Yeah.
Mrs. Power?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so, thank you for the introduction. So, we'll first have to determine whether the application is complete, and, actually, before we...
Kevin French filled it out, so I hope so.
It's, it's worth noting that you have a waiver request with a whole bunch of waivers, if anybody would like to address them, or if we just wanna look through them at the board. So waiver for location proposed driveways, because not applicable to boundary line adjustment, location proposed wells and septic, not applicable for boundary line adjustment, soil type units, flood area hazard, topographic contours, year-round water courses, final locations of all proposed improvements, cross-sections profiles and grades of street, plans and profiles of storm drains, land included in streets, engineer estimates one benchmark shall be established in each section of subdivision, state subdivision approval, state approvals from DOT, covenants and restrictions, and additional information or documentation required by planning board. That's quite a few, but on the other hand, given what you're proposing, to me at least...
I didn't fill this out, Kevin French filled it out, so, he's, he said there was no actual application for this boundary line adjustment, so he used this form, and he's the one who filled it out, so...
To me, it looks reasonable for what we're actually doing.
I move, I move to grant this of the waivers as requested.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, this is my old ski hill when I was a kid.
Late Neil.
Come on, visit us.
So this, this is just a waiver request?
Yeah, I just can just add another benefit to this, it does, it does make the Powers property more conforming in terms of the side yard, so all the non-conformities will disappear, so that is just definitely a benefit on that, so it'd be more conforming to the zoning in terms of the setback of the side yard.
Wonderful, thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of accepting the waiver requests?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, okay, waiver's granted.
I make a motion that we accept the application as complete.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, okay, application accepted as complete. Any further comments or questions from the board before we open the public hearing? Any further comments or questions from the board before we open the public hearing?
I have a question about the new bounds. Have the pins been set?
Kevin French was waiting until you decided whether this was okay or not before.
Okay, so he will set the pins once, once it's approved. Thank you.
Yeah, we were waiting for approval first.
Kevin French and Alan Barnard worked many years together under John French.
Took a while to get him over here to.
Yeah, he's busy.
Thank you very much.
He's probably happy he's not here with us tonight.
So, it is currently nine forty-four PM, and I will open a public hearing. Would anyone like to comment on this application? It is currently nine forty-four PM, and I will close the public hearing.
Make a motion that we approve the lot line adjustment.
I second that motion.
Mine?
Molly guesses.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Can I offer a retroactive finding of fact?
Oh, we didn't do any finding of facts. Yes, please, please do.
So, my, the survey depicts two areas changing from one property to another that are equal in area, so there will be no net change to the area of either lot.
Finding of fact, the proposed lot line allows the Michael Wanda Power House to be in compliance with setbacks.
I think that's enough.
Any further discussion? Thank you for the, thank you for the reminder of finding of fact at this late hour, Phil. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right, it is approved, and thank you for hanging in there for a long night.
Yes, that's fortunate. Set those pins now.
What do you suggest Colby do?
Yeah, yeah.
And of course.
Go to D E S and.
Yeah, oh, anyway. So.
You know, they, they have a whole list of people, I mean.
Informational and pre-application reviews. Please no. Okay, any other business from members of the board or staff?
Not on my end.
You don't have a slideshow?
I do not.
Okay, public comments?
I was gonna say, we do, we do have one member of the public who stayed for the whole time.
If this was in another state, they would just be warming up for the planning board meeting. Sometimes they go to midnight just to let you know.
Oh, I know.
Wow.
Thank you.
So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In fact, my, the meeting I went to last night started at seven, and they had, they were supposed to be done by nine, and people were, like, looking at their watches and backing up at nine. Two hours.
Concise.
I don't know how they do it, but, yeah.
I'm the only public here.
Yeah? That is your public comments, thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Hey.
Hey, you're.
I can, I could say nay in my own, my own.